With our workshop and the first thing we want to talk about is the master park plan. Just want to give a little bit of history on this. The previous council, we did a community input survey to see what all some things that were lacking and what people were wanting. Of course, we didn't just do a survey. We also did town hall meetings. We had social media input, public forums up here, because you don't want to rely on just one. And brought forward a master park plan. And I think you guys have all heard where we talked about kind of what the Sunflower Commerce Park was before the first building went in. And Marlon talked, did a really good job talking about that, that you got to come out and just see a field, you know, come out and see a field with utilities, a lot more interesting to potential people who might move out there. And last, oh, last spring, Jerry and I attended an international shopping center conference with whatever, 60,000 of our closest friends. And saw many a presentation about how natural gathering spots truly are the trend. And researchers showing that that is the trend that is needed to especially to begin retail, begin commercial. We don't have a historic downtown that we can revitalize. We don't have a, you know, a cliff that we can build off of. We don't have that, you know, natural river that we can build up on the bank. So what do we do to create this natural gathering center that then can grow and propel commercial business, whether it be retail, restaurants, services, you know, what have you? It's all things we want to look at and we want to, certainly it's a goal of mine to bring that here to Bel Air. So had a master park plan that came out of, what, three or four, like I said, open houses with different changes and workshops and based off the survey. So the goal tonight is, you know, this isn't the night where we talk about moving sidewalks with trees or all of that, but just to find out if this council still wants to move forward with the master park, which is why I asked the gentleman in front of us here to come in. They're going to talk a little bit about, kind of give a brief overview of the master park plan and then want to have some discussion to see if that's something that we want to move forward to do as a governing body. I will just tell you from upfront, it is something that I want to see us do. It is my opinion that this can absolutely be a game changer and can be the catapult that is needed to move us in that next direction to bring in the commercial. So I'll just let you know, that's my little prejudice at the beginning. Like I said, previous council went through all this and so I asked these guys to come in again to give a brief overview with that and afterwards find out if this new, this governing body feels the same way, then certainly will start taking the steps necessary. The steps necessary will be to find out, you know, we'll need to get citizens input. We'll need to find out cost. We'll need to look at phases. We need to talk about how we're going to pay for it. So, but tonight we just want to kind of hear an overview of the, of the plan. So I'll turn it over.
Thank you. For those of you that I haven't met, my name is Jeff Best. I'm a landscape architect with LK Architecture. A few familiar faces around the table from last year. This project's been going on for a little while, starting with a survey, as the mayor said, and then moving into public open houses, which I know some folks were there for that. At that point in time, we were really looking at two different properties. We didn't know which one we were going to move forward with the design plans on. But the reoccurring theme that we kept on hearing was the community wanting a gathering place or somewhere where the community could come together. That really started pushing us maybe a little bit closer or more in this direction over to the property that we, we looked at. Right after that first public open house, we came to workshop and we talked about it together with the council. And they reinforced that idea that, you know, that's what we should be looking at and we should be looking at right across the way from, from City Hall. So that's kind of what launched the, the design plans, if you will. Then we kind of came up with this kind of almost a vision board of what we kind of anticipated for the space or what we really wanted to achieve for activities and events there, because that's what it really was all about. The other idea behind that is if we, we could utilize that, the park ground and that public investment to possibly jumpstart some development around it. As soon as you start having some development around it, it starts backfeeding into the park, park backfeeding into them. So there's a real synergistic, synergistic relationship between the two. As the mayor was saying and Jerry will talk about a little bit, that's a pretty common theme in a lot of developments around the country these days. Now, I jumped through those first two pages because we want to get to the plan a little bit and we'll get to a video that we put together. I don't know, I'm sure everybody's probably seen that by now. We looked at, oh, I think we came back with about three conceptual designs originally to workshop and actually ran that past Marlon and Jerry too. And they weighed in on that plan, as did council. So it kind of morphed and actually two of them kind of, kind of merged together to create the final that you're, this plan that you're seeing in front of you, which really took the best parts of those plans and put them into a composite. What we really wanted to look at doing is developing out for the park, the piece of ground that obviously we wanted for the park, but also the part of ground or the piece of the ground overall that maybe was the least developable or attractive for the developers, thinking that the arterial streets was probably most attractive, and it normally is around here. But I really wanted the middle for the park because of its access on City Hall and that connection, plus the topography coming through. I knew we were going to have stormwater detention. I wanted to do, I wanted, I wanted to grab the detention instead of having the developers worry about that. Let's take that as amenity for us, which again makes more ground for them since they don't have to do detention. And of course, what we've got shown here, some subdividing of the ground to make accessibility or make those parcels that were breaking up a little more accessible. The access between North Rock Road, 53rd, I don't know if that's a public street. I don't know if it's, you know, some type of, you know, cross-lack, access agreement, drive. We don't know that yet, but we'll try to source through that on what's most appropriate for accessing all of that ground. The, the drive that connects both phase one, which is kind of the circular or half circle drive, if you will, up to that connector from 53rd to North Rock, really actually Jerry came up with that thought. We didn't have that originally, but the idea was to get more access or more eyes on the park, more access to the park along that side of it. Then we talked about how we wanted the overall space to operate. We knew we wanted a lot of event space, actually lawn, relatively inexpensive way to do that, but also having a structure in there for events to take places that could be performance or what have you. And then right across from City Hall, we talked about making that connection a lot stronger with Memorial Walk. We don't, we never defined exactly what that memorial was or memorials, but we knew we wanted to have something because we don't have anything like that in town really. And then just on the other side, we're talking about having the interactive fountain. That'll take a little bit of pressure off of the, you know, this swing, the swing pool here, also creating a much, you know, a really strong focal point. Another big part of this was a farmer's market idea. We heard that over and over. Where in phase one, which again, if you look on the next sheet, is that internal space that could occur with the splash pad on the weekends and, and also in relationship with that memorial walkway, you could even have events set up at City Hall, people sitting in the lawn, close down the street, kind of between those two points. And then you have some parking maybe for food trucks back here so you could get kind of a really interesting public event happening in that area. Jerry, you kind of skipped over the overall development as far as development goes. Do you want to take a step back and talk a little bit more about that?
Sure. So if you go back to this, this site plan here, it, is, you can see there are parcels numbered one, two, three, and four that wrap around this park. And I think one way to think of this, this park is not only as a community gathering place, but also as an anchor for a town center. So just as in the old days, a shopping center would have an anchor tenant, maybe a department store, and then all the smaller stores would come in around those. Some communities do community amenity like this and create the, that energy and the activity and the, the identity of an anchor with, with the actual community feature. And that's, that's really the big idea here. I, I came in at the process late. I was, was not engaged when you were doing the workshops and all that, but I thought the plan that, that Jeff came up with, all that great input was really right on, on track. You already have somewhat of an anchor in the city hall here, so I love that it's tied in with that. As he mentioned, we, we did talk a little bit about the shape of the park and how it could be not only amenity for the community, but an amenity for future development that can happen around. The great, one of the great benefits of this particular location is you have two really important streets that border it. And so Rock Road, I think will be, is and can be further an iconic address for, for businesses. So on the one side, you've got access and visibility from Rock Road along the east side on parcels two and three, but you also have direct access to this park. So, you know, how does that benefit businesses that would come in there? Well, if it's an office development, that's an amenity. That's, that would be a feature that would be very popular with your employees to be able to have a place where they could go for a walk on their lunch hour, that type of thing. For a retailer or a small restaurant, it, again, the events that happen here will attract potential customers to the area. And I think it, again, it helps brand your, your community when you can have these events where you're bringing in not, not only a place for your residents to gather, but bringing in people from surrounding areas. And, you know, this is not something, although you want them to be community-based, there are a lot of organizations around the greater Wichita area that are looking for places to hold events, stage 10K runs or charity runs and those types of things, or reunions or, you know, there are a lot of different ways this, this park could be used. But there, there is still a significant amount of development that can happen around this. You know, I'd say conservatively speaking, I think when, when Jeff, we were playing around with this, we were looking at maybe 15,000 to 20,000 square feet, for instance, in, in here. And a lot of that depends whether it's, it is office or retail or restaurant, because they all have very different parking requirements. And restaurant has higher parking requirements than a retailer does and a retailer has higher parking requirements than most offices, except medical office has about the same, needs about the same amount of parking as a, as a retailer would. So, you know, you've got to look at each, each development based on what the uses are. But, but I, what I like about this is it's, it's because of the arterial streets it's bounded by, it does have potential for retail and restaurant. But because of the amenities and that are there, I think it would also be a good office location. And I think there's a lot of examples, as the mayor said, of where these have been mixed together. It was ironic, we were at a shopping center, international shopping center conference and you, you don't hear the term shopping center a lot anymore. People, there are very few just purely shopping centers being developed anywhere in the country today. What you hear a lot of talk about are town centers and there are a lot of great examples, like the mayor said. We saw some cool pictures of.
Or the retail amen or whatever they called it, where they were mixing entertainment and retail.
Right, exactly. And, and so there's just a lot of ways that these can work together. I think the way Jeff has laid them out provides flexibility for a lot of different types of uses and configurations. This could work as all single story development or, you know, you could also see even some, a mix where you might see a coffee shop and a, a small retailer and maybe some service retail with some offices above it. So the, the kind of the, the grand idea of this or example of this that a lot of people talk about, at least in this part of the country, is South Lake Town Center in South Lake, Texas. And this will never be like that because that, that is, if you Google it, it'll blow your mind.
It's Texas-sized.
It's Texas-sized. Well, it happened to be the place to move in North, the North Dallas Fort Worth area in, in the 1990s and in early 2000s. So the area just blew up and with all those rooftops, they got a lot of big retail and movie theaters and all sorts of stuff. But that project began, if you go look at the pictures of it now, it began with a city hall and a town square, which is really what you're talking about here. So on a much smaller scale, I think, you know, we can create this walkable area that people in these neighborhoods can walk to, people in your community can come and gather here for events and, and you can stage events that would attract people from around the metro, metro area.
The funny thing is, we're just wrapping up. We've got an opportunity to work on Andover's amphitheater recently and getting that mapped up and then talking about doing, you know, they've been doing concerts, we don't want to hear for the last four, five years. And they're going to ramp that up. They're going to do more because they have a venue for it. That's not quite the same. It's a little different because that is in the middle of a larger park. They don't have any developable ground around it, so they don't get a lot of the benefits that maybe this has. While this may be a little bit smaller venue, I could see it actually having more events here and again feeding off that adjacent development is something that's pretty unique.
I think one, I think this was actually your idea, Jeff. You had it labeled that way on one of your plans you showed me, but this parcel four, for instance, would lend itself really well to a venue, a place, an indoor venue where, where, and there are a number of these around town and they seem to all be getting booked up. I haven't done a market study on them, but I just, I've heard good things about the ones that have opened and I've also heard anecdotally from people who've tried to book wedding parties and those types of, you know, class reunions and those types of things, that it's just hard, especially weekend nights. And so I could see this being an excellent spot for that and you could stage events off of the park and be overlooking the pond and you could see that being a great use for that particular location.
Yeah, the other one was parcel one, I'd, we don't know how much, you know, retail everything will support through here yet, but I like parcel one actually getting people living out here potentially. And that may be senior, maybe some type of alternative, higher density housing of some sort. I like having eyes on the park and people in there, you know, in the evenings, even when there isn't events. Plus it'd be, I think, really interesting if there was a senior living, independent living and you had some of the restaurants and whatnot, you could see people actually just migrating and walking over for dinner and then walking back through and you start getting a lot of that traffic in through there as well as the neighborhood filtering back, back down. Everybody want to see the video or have you all seen it enough?
I never get tired of looking at it because it lets us dream.
It's a little easier to kind of realize the park, I think, in this form, so.
Are you guys all okay if we watch it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The other thing I'd say about, I haven't said yet also about this, when we modeled this, we also anticipated the potentially things we'd be filling in, food levels wise. And it's pretty easy to actually insert those into this as time goes on so it can keep updating. Or if you're looking at a potential, someone potentially coming in, they want to kind of see it, that could be done as well. Boy, that green really jumps off. I'm not so sure it's the, it's quite right on this pond.
It's not pesky, is it?
I don't know what they're feeding in. Does that memorial walkway across there get you to interact with that? A lot of the styling is really pulled out of City Hall, but it's a hair more contemporary as well. I think there's some nice characteristics of, you know, period style architecture, but still kind of a little bit more contemporary to your designers before. What's in the hall background? That's a souvenir minute. Of course, the great lawn, that's of course where most of your activity to actually incur more audiences. As time went on and phase two kind of came in, this is the area that we probably envisioned the food trucks and the vendors from farmer's market kind of migrating to would be along this stretch. And then at the other end, we've got the, the pavilion. And it's two-sided, so you can actually have two different events happening if you wanted. This side of the north, more eastern side, it gets smaller, it may get smaller, but the other side, of course, plays out to more. I doubt if we'd actually allow anybody to just roll up there and put a log to the fire so. If we did a fireplace, that would be totally automated and I don't think we'll get the smoke quite like that.
But you keep them warm.
And again, this isn't final design. This is just kind of where we ended up with through the, the workshops. Once we get to final design, things will, will change a bit. Vaughn gave us a nice opportunity to book for floating gardens plus a bridge. Again, just another experience. Then this walkway would actually tie in really well to this, that development that's right along Rock Road. That's that unkempt porch over there that's. I think that's probably good. This goes on a little bit longer, I think it goes into 19, so. Jeff, I also included the estimates in their package form so they could see the estimated costs for each of the phases.
I do have just, I mean, a couple of concerns. I mean, I am, I am 100% for this park, I think, creating a space for, for events and gathering and then the retail that is possible with this would be a huge boon to the city. I do have a few concerns about just how this is kind of laid out right now. I mean, I don't know if you want my ideas right now or.
It's entirely up to how everybody wants to run the show. I mean, I'm here, so.
I mean, just a little bit of my concerns is with the splash pad. I mean, one thing that I would like to see is like 100% ADA compliant park. I think that would be a, a huge benefit to the city.
Sure.
And that, I think, needs to be right by the splash pad. That way you don't have kids on one side because they're crossing and parents losing their kids. And that's kind of my concern with the splash pad is, is it's so close to so much parking and there's, there's so many areas to escape, I guess, from. I mean, my kids are old enough now that, that, you know, they can run in traffic and be all right, but I know Councilman Elsoff has little ones that, you know, can escape. So I think having it not, not as much traffic flow around where the kids are going to be playing would be kind of a safety issue.
What if, I think I'm hearing two things. ADA compliance is not a problem. I mean, we'll design everything to be ADA compliant everywhere in the park. I think the, the, I understand what you're saying as far as corralling the children a little bit. I think we could work with where we are and actually corral them a bit more. It's a little too open right now.
I did say park, but what I meant is, is like playground, play equipment.
Okay, playground. Okay, that's, that's something we had talked about too through workshops. We didn't include it now, but we have the space to, to include it.
Because I know what we have now in Bel Air, they're not 100% ADA compliant as far as playground equipment and everything. And that's what I'd like to see added along with the splash pad to go, and then those two amenities being together.
Okay, you would like those co-located, are.
And then just another thought just as far as the pavilion goes, and this, this comes from just thinking about future of what we can do with the, the open space is if the, the pavilion, you know, on the northwest here where we have the straight road, if we could almost curve that a little more, put the pavilion that way, that way it plays wide instead of long. So like, let's say we have some kind of concert or, or something at the pavilion, it plays to a wide audience instead of a long audience. I think that would help include more people in, if that makes sense.
I understand what you're saying. I think it's something we can look at.
And this is certainly, like I said, what we wanted to do tonight was have new council see the possibilities here and get a consensus if this is something that you guys all are on board for us moving forward with. I've heard Councilmember Hawes and I've indicated that it's something I definitely am in favor of for two reasons. One, because it is that amenity, but to be that catalyst for the, the commercial growth, which is badly needed so that our tax base isn't completely reliant just on homeowners So just wanted to kind of go around, see if this is something that you guys are all in favor for, if, you know, if it's something you guys like. If you don't like it, let us, if you don't like the idea of a park, master park, let us know. If you have other ideas, let us know. And then, you know, from that, if we're moving forward with this, then like I said, we'll get the cost, we'll get the dates, we'll definitely want to get citizens input, we want to look at, you know, make sure that all the amenities, like you talked about, we want are in and everything. So, do you want to say something?
Yeah. So what, I mean, I see this cost about $4 million and change for, for all four phases. So what considerations have we done with investors or how we, how we come up with this $4 million to, to, I don't intend this in four phases, but.
Yeah, yeah, and that's something, yeah, we would want to have that identified. We'd certainly want to look at having a CID, Community Improvement District, which then, you know, the retail, then that absolutely helps pay for all of it. We talked about the Memorial Garden, whether it's Memorial Garden or not. Councilmember Hawes has mentioned a couple of times too, that we could look for sponsorships. And I've got no problem knocking on doors to have the company ABC Pavilion, to have the, you know, appliances inside paid for by company, you know, EFG, whatever. You know, we'll need to look at all of that.
Yeah, and that's my, sorry, I like the idea, the plan concept, I just, I just don't see where money comes from for that.
Right. And that's something we would need to forecast for in future, but we didn't want to go through and do all that without.
Have we talked with investors? Have we opened this up to investors to partnering with the city to do this project, right?
Not.
Any discussion like that?
No. And typically, you know, the investors are going to be the ones that put in all the retail and such. So like, as the mayor had said, I think what we would do is we would create a community improvement district that includes all this area. And, and by doing that, you can, the council can determine whether you want a one or two percent, up to two percent. And by doing that, you can, the council can determine whether you want a 1% or 2%, up to 2% additional sales tax on all the retail that would then go back to the city. And it's for a 22-year period is the max it can be. And so, so that would be a way to generate funds to pay for this. Now, again, we don't know what those dollars are. I'd have to work with Jerry because he could, knowing the sizes and as you had mentioned, that they kind of know the size of buildings they could build. And if we had X number of retail and, because commercial may not pay sales tax, the professional office definitely not pay. But then at that point, we look at maybe some kind of special assessment because the CID can do that as well. So maybe, you know, a dentist's office that wants to overlook the pond, maybe they have to pay a special assessment for the park or something. And the retail, they just, their sales tax goes towards paying it. And so Jerry would work on a financial plan, a pro forma type thing for this whole area. If it was built out, what it would generate, and then that would give you a little bit more information about what the potential is for revenue.
And this would also be something where, I don't, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I don't think this is something where we want to do a sales or a, you know, tax increase, a mill increase, you know, without going to the public for sure, you know, so.
Well, I also think that this is something that all these pictures should be brought back to the community in town hall meetings and stuff. And ask them if this is what they want done. Because if, we've had town hall meetings and this was the biggest project that they said, but with people moving in and out, you may have some new customers. But I think it's fantastic. And I agree with the mayor. I think we should do it, but I definitely think we need to have impact from the city.
Oh, absolutely. Citizens, you bet.
Well, I really liked the plan. I really thought that was a great video and there's a lot of great concepts here. And I think it's really important to have these types of areas in the community and these types of plans going forward. I guess where I'm concerned is just on the money aspect of it. And I would be concerned with moving forward with it if we're going to track, detract any money from road projects or other infrastructure projects that I heard from the community that they really want prioritized over something that's more cosmetic like this. And so if we think this could be funded and paid for exclusively through sponsorship, or even better, if we could find a developer that wanted to develop this area and make the investment in this area, I think that would be amazing. But as far as the city actually spending tax dollars on it at this point, I would struggle to want to move forward with that.
Well, I think I'm really appreciative of Mr. Mayor, your vision for our community here and spearheading this, this type of project. I think, I think it is important long-term and we need to have a goal to look towards, a future to look towards. And I like the park idea. I definitely am excited by what I see and I just want to echo, I'm concerned too. I have, I have concerns and basically I'm going to echo what Councilman Smith and Benage had to say about concerns for how we're going to pay for this. It is, it is exciting, but it is also, you know, concerning to kind of get into this type of project and looking at it. At the same time, we've got, you know, our issues with roads crumbling and all the, you know, maintenance type things that we've talked about that need to be prioritized. And I know everyone around this table is aware of that, but I, I just, you know, I want us to move forward with a plan for, you know, exactly, you know, what our funding is going to be like, you know. It is, it's exciting and kind of scary at the same time, you know. I'm sure we all share those conflicting sense of moving forward here. So, yeah, I'm for it as, as long as we can show a responsible way to the taxpayers and how we get there. I think that's good. I guess I'd like to just speak to a couple of specific design elements. Councilman Hawes brought up something. So when I take a look at the park and again, you know, I'm speaking as a father that has a brood of small children right now. So for those of you that have grown children or, you know, I'm going to take you back to what, what it's like. So, so when my wife and I or one of us takes the kids to a park, what we want to do is we want to pull up and park the car, let the kids out. And, you know, they'll run into the playground equipment or whatever they see or they want to play with, or a splash pad. And then we want to find some chairs or something in the shade to sit down and kind of watch. We kind of want to be kind of hands off and just keep them in our sight. And I think I can speak for a lot of the families that have little ones. That's, that's the park experience that they want. When you're looking at a park, you're like, okay, I'm going to park the car here and then the kids will be there and they'll be playing and they'll be safe. So with that in mind, I look at, you know, our phase one concept here. And the first thing I'm concerned about is that we have a play area that kids have to cross this, you know, the parking lot to get to the, you know, the field. And I know that having that arcing parking lot is an artistic and cool design element, but what I see is a potential problem. And I'm just on a, I'm speaking purely as a practicality thing here, and I think it's something that we should consider. One thing I just kind of, that just kind of strikes up in my mind is, I just drew a simple, simple sketch, but if we could have the parking lot just hug the Central Park Avenue there and then have the rest of whatever we have, a splash pad, park, and again echoing what Councilman Hawes had to say. When you have the splash pad, it's nice to have some kind of playground equipment real close by, like whether it's a, like a climbing castle type thing, a structure to climb on or monkey bars or swing set. Swings are still really popular. The kids like to go to the swings. If there's no swings, it's always kind of a, kind of a bummer at a park. You got to have something to climb on, a slide to go down and a set of swings. But if that were paired up with a splash pad in the middle of the summer, the splash pads are awesome because they're, you know, low maintenance and the parents don't have to worry about kids going under the water or anything. So a splash pad, I think, is, as far as being a phase one, it has, that's an essential. Because I think if you talk to the families that have young children and they say, oh, you want to go to the park, a splash pad will get them to the park all the time. I know if we had a splash pad here, we would go. I occasionally take my family up to Heston. Heston has a nice splash pad up there. And that's definitely a magnet for families and little kids. And frankly, adults too. I mean, when it's so hot, you want to dip your feet in water and, you know, a splash pad is awesome. So I think pairing a splash pad with a climbing area or a kid playground thing, that, those have to kind of come together. Otherwise, I think we're missing out if we don't have that in that early phase. And then just thinking in terms of, do the children have to cross a parking lot or cross a street to get to another area? That, that is a concern. And with the current design, you know, that's something that I think we should reconsider. I think getting all the cars kind of line the outside of where all the activity is is an important thing. And this design kind of violates that in principle. And I know it's a development thing and this is, I know you have multiple versions of this and whatever, but just speaking as a practical kind of parent looking over young children point of view, that's kind of the first thing that I kind of thought of when I, when I see the design. Otherwise, I mean, I, I like the approach here and the idea of, of building another park. And I think taking it in phases is the way to go. Yeah, those are, those are kind of, those are my thoughts. I appreciate you taking the time.
I appreciate all the thoughts and inputs here. You know, this is just, you know, looking again at this land that right now is not making us a penny. In fact, it's costing us a lot of pennies every single month and year. And finding out what it is that we can do to be a catalyst to bring in that commercial that will take city-owned land down. That will add to the tax base. You know, we're going to look at all of that at the same time. And I hear what all of you are saying because I'm saying and thinking the exact same thing. We do not want to take away and the plan is never ever to take away from those budget priorities, street repairs and, and those things that are important. This is something, yeah, we'd want to, yeah, we wanted to have this discussion and conversation. I think hearing it that we'll move forward and look into those costs, look into how the payments are, you know, to how we're going to be able to do this. Between an approach with, like I said, decreasing the amount of land that the city owns, bringing in future tax base along with, you know, the very present, you know, bonds, the CID, sponsorship, all of those things are, you know, selling land to businesses. Those are all things that we'll look at so that hopefully come up with a plan that we can make this viable and move forward with it, so.
One quick question. So I think we've got around 12 acres of land that's parceled out here around the park area. Do you have an estimate of what the value of that land is today on the market, what the market value, that would be, is it just in an order of magnitude level detail?
Like the way it is now?
The way it is now.
The way it sits now.
Are you looking at me?
Just asking if anyone might know.
Well, let me, let me answer that question a little backwards.
Sure.
I remember when we had one of these community meetings and I was, I had manned one of those stations. It was fascinating. People like you came by with their little kids. They talked about their little kids. And I heard comments that were related to family fun, exercise, entertainment and socializing. Your wife goes down to the Central Park with another family's wife. You watch the kids, the splash pad and they talk. So that's that. So this becomes not just a place to go, the B place to go. And that's true of the community, but it's also true of the businesses. And now to your question, you know, if you try to sell that today, you know, we've got plenty of comps out here where we sold it for $10,000 an acre. That's not what you want to do. When you create what he's, what Jeff's talking about here, you're going to turn that from $10,000 an acre to $3, $4, $5 a square foot. And that's where you want to go. So the businesses, the businesses right now have places to go. I mean, we can back up into a cemetery and that would house an office park just fine. There's nowhere you want to go. So when you do this, you create a lot of value. And I could say it goes from prices per acre to prices per square foot. And, and you do that because if you're going to build an office, you're going to build an ice cream shop, you're going to build a coffee shop, you're going to do it where everybody wants to go. So that's the thing that I think we need to remember. I remember when, 10 years ago, City Wichita did a master study, spent hundreds of thousands of dollars for master plan. I remember learning two things. One is the concept of walkability was such a big deal. To be able to walk from your house, in that case, walk through the downtown area, walk and within a short walk, you could be doing a lot of different, a lot of different things, which is what you've done here. You can walk to the water, you can walk to the splash pad, you can walk to the playground. It's walkability. The second thing was critical mass. One of the things that absolutely kills the development of a large area is to spot things all over the area. That affects the walkability. Critical mass where you're just really close in, and this is what he's done here. So when you have a critical mass of entertainment venues or meeting areas or socializing areas, family fun, exercise, entertainment and socializing, it's all been done right here. Well, hey, then it makes a lot of sense to put an office next to, a dental office next to it, or a little ice cream shop or coffee shop next to it. You wouldn't put it anywhere else. You'd want to put it right there. So to the question of value, those kinds of things in Wichita, for example, Jerry can tell you too, I mean, those things are going to be up as high as $10 a foot. Now, I'm not going to say that for here because I don't want to mislead, but let's say that it would be not uncommon to believe that it could be $5 to $7 a foot. Did you read it, Jerry?
Closer to the corner, the more valuable.
Right, right.
And the larger the lot, value per square foot comes down. To your earlier point, if you sell it in bulk, then you're starting to sell by the acre versus by the square foot. So, you know, the question is really going to be, you know, there's an investment required here to create this amenity. And so who's, who's going to make that investment and what's the return on, on that investment? I think this is, is going to be, it's certainly doable, but it won't be an easy thing to do.
Well, and the reason that I was asking the question is just to understand, you know, if one of the primary motivators for doing this type of development is for the city to sell that 12 acres of land, I wanted to kind of understand, you know, just phase one is, you know, is estimated to be a million dollars of expenses. And, you know, spending a million dollars to sell $120,000 land doesn't sound, you know, that amazing as a motivator to me. So I think in my mind, this would have to be done for maybe other reasons to build the community other than just to sell that land. And so that's just what I was trying to think about.
How many square feet are in an acre?
43,560.
43,560. So, I mean, if you did some quick math, call it 40,000, at $5 an acre, you're talking $200,000 for an acre? I mean, you're talking about taking 12 acres approximately, 12 acres at $10,000 an acre now to 12 acres at $200,000 an acre. I mean, right there, just the land sales alone is going to pay for a big chunk of the park. I know it's not going to come right away, but I think, I mean, you know, and like, like the mayor said, you know, we're not going to take away from any necessities that are needed as far as roads and anything like that goes. But if we can show that there is a direct benefit to not only the community members, but to the debt itself. I mean, if you, you know, 12, you know, 12 times 2 million is 2.4 million, and then you get the tax base on top of that. I mean, if we can show that by doing this, there's a huge benefit sooner rather than later. You know, I'm, I definitely before, you know, kind of going all in on it really. I mean, I know it's probably not feasible. It's a lot of money to put upfront, but, but if you, I mean...
Everybody buy a lottery ticket.
If I buy a lottery ticket, I'm...
The fact that it's changing, the changing the value of the land around it to such a huge proportionate number is, is, you know, it's bigger than just the park itself.
But and along with that, I think comes that I think by doing that park and us wanting to do, I assume we would want to do, you know, a special improvement district or apply some specials to the property, that may make it harder to sell those properties and may also devalue what people are willing to pay for it. And so I don't know, you know, exactly how that would impact it, but that would be a concern that I had. And I think we also heard last time when you guys came and talked to us that your opinion then, I think you said, wasn't, was that we weren't necessarily underserved from a retail or a commercial perspective in Bel Air right now. And so demand for this type of real estate might also be a little bit limited. And so those are things that kind of make me concerned about wanting to make an investment of that magnitude at this point in time.
It will be a balancing act, but I think that what Jeff said really changes the equation of this and that is that you already own the land. And so that gives you another variable in that equation to work with. So, you know, in, I guess, one way of looking at it is if you were able to pay for all this and make this great amenity, then that would be your incentive to someone to come in here. That's there and, and, you know, they would get the benefit of it. If that's not realistic, then, you know, maybe you have them participate somehow in the financing of that through a CID or possibly even an improvement district. But you also have the ability to...
even an improvement district. But you also have the ability to set the price of that land where you need to, to make a deal. And then the other thing is the ability to phase this in. So you could take it in pieces and, and, and create that value as you go along the value. Obviously, the more activity, the more improvements you have, and the more commercial development you have there, then the value of the land that you own is going to go up, so.
And this isn't even taking into account the rest of the land Bel Air owns that's closer here that would benefit from this as well. That would go up in value.
And that was the brand, when I mentioned branding earlier, that's really the idea is that this is kind of.
You're talking about not just the 12 acres, but much more.
Right. It is in a very visible location where, you know, it would not go unnoticed. And I've seen communities spend a lot of money in parks that are underutilized because they're in the wrong place. You know, they got, someone gave them land, you know. And then, so then they build a park there. Well, you know, no one knows where it is. So this is a pretty unique situation you have here.
And let me throw one more financial issue in to think about is, you remember as we were working with the senior housing down here, the special assessments, this parcel has roughly $100,000 a year in special assessments we're paying for these roundabouts in the roads here. So there's a, not as just the holding cost of the land, but we're paying specials on this. So the quicker we can get rid of this, not only can we make money on the land, but we can get, do away with those special assessments, which is what we had to do down here. So.
And not just get rid of it.
There's other holding costs.
Yeah, but prudently get rid of it, I would add to that. And I appreciate all the comments here. Yeah, this definitely, I see this as an investment in the future, like I said, for, for future growth. You know, we keep hearing it's, if we want retail, well, what are the rooftop, rooftop numbers? What are the traffic numbers? This is going to attract all that. And it is land that we're paying for that's doing nothing for us right now. So, you know, this is, I've said it before, we do kind of have a, this is a double-edged sword with having all this land and land debt, but it is also a gold opportunity. So appreciate this idea. And I think we'll move forward with definitely, you know, hear the concerns so we can get the, get those questions answered before we make anything, before we move forward. We'll definitely want to look into all that before we bring anything else to council to, to consider on.
Well, I think it'd also help us a lot when we get, if we could get the first phase in with the two schools, Northeast Magnet and Isley, because they're going to look at that. That's the way Derby did it when they built their water park. And isn't that right?
Well, that's right.
When Derby built their water park, it brought in a lot of people around the area to buy homes. So it would help us sell a lot of homes that we still have up here, plus industrial area.
Well, you bring up the industrial, you know, every time we've made pitches to people who've come, in fact, from overseas, who've looked at our Sunflower Commerce Park, what's one thing, they all have different questions and different concerns, wants, needs, desires, but they all seem to want to know about quality of life for their employees, if they're relocating them here, or attracting new ones, or plan to expand. This certainly would be that, so. All right, well, thank you guys for being here and presenting this again and move us along. And we're going to talk about zoning. We'll talk about changes and special use permits. I know that was something that came up at our last, our council meeting, talking about, what we wanted to talk about on the, can't remember who it was who.
Yeah, I brought that up.
I knew it was one of them, okay.
And part of what I wanted to do there was just kind of understand what our current process is. You know, we had a, an agenda item a couple council meetings ago where there was a special use ordinance before us on a home-based business. And as I kind of read and looked into what had all gone on there, I was kind of surprised at how intense that process was. And I thought, wow, this seems like it could be easier and more efficient. And first wanted to make sure I understand the process, but then I'm interested in what the rest of the council thinks about that, and if anyone's interested in pursuing some simplification there. The other kind of, as I looked into that, the other thing that I, I read was in our ordinances, we define who's required to purchase a business or to, to get a business license. And I was surprised at how broad that definition was. It seemed like it might apply to a lot more people than I ever would have imagined. I think it said, anyone practicing any trade or craft in Bel Air. And so I read that to me, well, if somebody does photography and ever sells a photo, or paints pictures, or anyone that sells makeup, or jewelry, or anything like that out of their home might be subject to this. And so I was interested in getting some clarification there and all of this kind of understanding that.
So, I think I'll take your second question first. That section of the code is really broad. The way that a lot of people get out of it who are affiliated with, like Mary Kay or another company in town, is they're an agent of a company that's not in Bel Air, that may be in Bel Air and has a proper license. So they don't have to then again license their home business as an agent. So that gets a lot of the people with their own kind of segment of a business owned by somebody else. Now, someone who's a sole proprietor, who is making profit from, and from the, and the primary place that they make the profit is their home, those are the folks that, honestly, a lot of people just don't know that they need to have a business license in those cases. But in Bel Air, they do. And I think my understanding of that change in 2016, council looked at it and wanted to have a comprehensive way to kind of find everyone, gather everyone who had a business based in Bel Air making profit, and to make sure that neighbors and the city had opportunity, had an opportunity to weigh in and control the way that all that played out. And so that's where we find ourselves at such a broad, seemingly, in some cases restrictive ordinance that's in place now.
I don't recall off the top of my head if it was in here, but what, what was the fee associated with that, with the business license?
I'm not sure the exact amount. I'm not sure.
I think I read it was $50.
I would say $50, too.
And it has to be renewed every year?
Yes. Yep. And again, so that would be, so home-based businesses would have a bit more of a hurdle in those cases because they would pay their fee, and then, because residential areas are not zoned for business generally in Bel Air, they would need to come before planning commission. Planning commission would make sure that there's a proper notice period. Neighbors would need to be notified. They'd have a hearing explaining to neighbors of community planning commission, what they're doing in their home-based business, the flow of traffic, how it's going to affect noise. I mean, there are certain specific parameters that planning commission looks at to make sure that it doesn't change the nature, the character of the neighborhood, the feel of the neighborhood is what I'll say. And once planning commission believes that it will, that the nature of the community will be preserved, they present, they make a recommendation to council. Council then considers it, and that's where you see someone coming up before council, and you'll have that recommendation from planning commission, where citizens have weighed in, planning commission has taken time to kind of study the issue. And those are the home businesses that come before you. But you're right. That's, you know, if you're not, if you're not working for another affiliate, this is the process that Bel Air code requires all home-based businesses to go through.
Yeah. And as I read that, I thought, well, so the teenager that mows lawns down, down the street from me probably needs a business license here in Bel Air, the way that that's, that's worded.
Yeah. And that's kind of what I read it, when I read it too, and I thought, wow, that's a very broad base. And I wondered if it would be wiser to, to relook at that.
Yeah. I mean, I think, I think we should relook at it. I think what we need to prioritize is the idea that we want to encourage people from having, encourage people to have these businesses and make it easier for citizens and not have, you know, these kind of restrictions or regulations that are frankly on the books, being totally ignored by everybody. It's like, why do we have them? And if we can remove those burdens from citizens for doing something, you know, that's simple like a home business, I'm in favor of that.
I don't think that the lawn boy or the, the young lady that goes out to babysit or something like that, they don't have to have a license.
Yeah. It, all there are certain things you have to look at. I'd really want to.
I mean, he was doing it for a business and pulling a trailer and a bunch of mowers and stuff.
And that's part of what, the reason, you know, and it was broad. I remember we visited this, golly, it was a number of years ago, a long time ago, and left it broad. The main concern was wanting to have something so that, yeah, and absolutely, we want to encourage home-based businesses, I think.
I mean, it's like daycare centers. They've got to have a license, but they've got to have a state and a county license also, because they're taking care of children.
Yes. But, and finish what I was saying with having, we want to make sure that it wasn't a business where you're going to have a whole bunch of cars parked in front of the residence. It's just like what we just talked about, you know, that Mr. Jones talked about, that there's, different businesses have different types of parking. If, and I remember we had a lady that does a, was it a, like a physical therapy, yoga?
Yeah, yoga.
And massage therapy type thing. But it's never going to be more than three or four cars, and they can all park in her driveway, remember. I'm trying to think back, that was a few years ago. But it was stuff like that. We want to make sure it's not someone who has, you know, two or three big, you know, trucks out in front and messing up the, the flow of a neighborhood.
Playing a restaurant in their house.
Right, right, right.
I mean, would it, would it be helpful if we kind of limited the terms as far as, I mean, obviously, the kid that goes and mows lawns, he doesn't even have to report that to IRS as a, you know, because there's a certain number that you have to hit as an income before you even have to report. I mean, I, you know, I think if we maybe even added that into it where, look, if you make under whatever, whatever that number is, you don't have to worry about having that business, business license. I mean.
You could do that. You still want to take that, you still want to have planning commission study it. But keep in mind that anytime you're giving away that control, then every business, no matter whether or not it fits, you know, if your neighbor decides he wants to, you know, entertain people by playing music at midnight for, you know, well within, that would be covered by some of our other restrictions. Or making this really interesting foul-smelling dish that smokes up the neighborhood, and he makes less than $500, we don't have a way to get to him. So that's, that's part of the reason why it was written so broadly. I know that the process is as lean as it could be at that level. If you want to create, if you want to have planning commission look at creating some exempted business types, you'd want to really define those, like no smell, no cars coming to the house, no noise. And you'd want to have a very strict exception that wouldn't infringe on another person's right to quietly enjoy their home. So it would, it'd be probably, it'd be pretty lengthy, but you might do what you want as far as cash.
In other words, you can have people come for Thanksgiving or Christmas because they not be laughing.
Well, you know, in any, any situation where somebody's doing something out of their home, and if they don't have a sign, and they're not maintaining regular business hours, you know, those are the types of things where I'm concerned if we regulate those things. Regulating things that people can do, you know, in the privacy of their homes is a concern for me, especially if it doesn't, you know, if it shouldn't really normally be noticeable to people. I did a little bit of research, and there, there are places out there that rate cities as far as how business-friendly they are. And Oklahoma City was rated as an A+. I think it was one of the best in the United States according to this website. And so I did a little bit of looking into how they're structured. And the way that they're structured, from what I could tell, was they, they said that it, they, they basically took an approach of listing the types of businesses that they wanted to regulate. And so they said, anyone that meets the condition in our code for regulation needs to apply for a business license. And so over time, they can add different businesses that they wanted to regulate. And so I wonder if that might be a different approach as opposed to saying everything unless we get an exemption, maybe just start building a list of the things that we do want to regulate.
So be a listing so many cars.
But I know.
Well, I don't want a little boy that's mowing grandma's yard, or.
Right.
Some girl babysitting for.
Or somebody who sells some things on eBay.
Or people that, you know, give piano lessons, or, you know, there's a number of things that people do in their homes that, in my opinion, we shouldn't be regulating or trying to.
And right now, basically, we're saying, we get to pick and choose which ones we're going to.
So I guess one of those early questions that need to be answered is, have we had any complaints from any citizen that has wanted to have a business and felt like they couldn't because they didn't want to apply for a business license? Has that, has that happened, or?
I don't think so.
No.
Has anybody complained in general about our?
No, I think.
They've complained about the price years ago.
Yeah.
I'm suspecting it's being ignored more than anything else.
The sense.
Most people probably don't realize that. But it does get kind of, you can get very apprehensive that, well, like the, the guy that was just approved on his home-based business. You know, he had to go through a process. And so someone that's selling things on eBay may be concerned about coming through our two-month process to meet with a planning commission and going to the city council and things like that. So some people may realize it and just say that, well, in my situation, I, that's an awful lot for me to have to go through, knowing, nobody knows I'm doing it anyway. So.
But I think, you know, setting out business-friendly policies are really important for the city, especially as we look to try and sell land. Home-based businesses here in Bel Air could turn into the bigger businesses that could purchase our land and build and invest here in Bel Air. And I think it's really important to set those, to set that priority in that vision.
You know, it's been March right now. What about all the people who do taxes in the evening out of their home? Tax preparers for that. So what we ran into, and I know I'm thinking back to a couple of times that this has come up over the last few years. One was the lady who was doing, I think it was like physical therapy and yoga.
Yep.
And the most she would ever have would be three cars, but she stipulated that. Well, part of why she had that business, it was, I guess, some type of medical, she needed business insurance. Those people who have a, an in-home business that's different from selling makeup or selling, or giving piano lessons, they need insurance. There's another one who runs a vegan catering business, if I remember correctly, and was, you know, certainly we didn't want him to move out of the city, but that was, one of the things was as long as, we're not talking catering trucks, we're talking him taking food that he cooks in his kitchen and puts it in his car and drives away, just like as if I go to a potluck at my church, you know. No one, you know, it's stuff like that. But again, he wanted us, for insurance for all that, because I think he had a bigger oven or something. That's the stuff. Well, then insurance is going to, because they will look for things if there ever is a claim. Oh, well, you weren't. So, so we have to have some type of special use permit, I think, in place. But, you know, it, I, I see what you guys are saying. Yeah, we just kind of left it alone because, yeah, we, I guess it is, it's very discretionary if we're going to go after or not go after.
Right. And like, but I guess something to add to the thinking, which I think is already going on in this area, is the, that vegan person came before planning commission, neighbors came and spoke, and they had an opportunity to weigh in and kind of say what they thought about this change to their neighborhood. And then if he didn't meet what was expected, because he had been through the process and people were aware, and there was an opportunity, the city had a way to revoke the license, there was that oversight and control, and then the whole, you know, you had your planning commission look at it, you had a zoning administrator and clerk, you had the neighbors look at it. So it's almost like the community decided that that specific situation was okay. But I guess you have to think, do you want the community to decide that when someone wants to do an eBay online quiet business?
Right.
And it, but if you give it up, then when that person, when eBay evolves and drones are coming and boxes are cluttering someone's front yard, you, you want to think about those things too, I guess, you can agree, look at the code again at that time.
By the way, we never did get that ordinance on drones, did we?
No. No, gone and gone. Just kind of decided to let that sit aside for a while.
I still think we should have one. I don't want snooping in my bedroom window.
How do homeowners associations come into play in this space?
So in this space, any zoning permit or any business permit, business license permit that has to go through a zoning process in Bel Air has to meet all of our requirements. We also have a, a section that says, this permit does not override covenants associated with homeowners associations.
So people that were more concerned about the specific area and their, look and feel of their neighborhood.
Yes.
Their homeowners association still has the opportunity to provide some regulation there as well?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it's interesting. Covenants have actually more power than our zoning codes do. So.
If we can't do anything about them. If we can't do anything about them.
Yeah. And that's one of the tough parts about, you know, managing the different, um, aspects of people's rights and neighbors' rights and things is, you know, these type of things, and that's why we have a zoning process. And, um, and, and the other piece of it is, you know, with, well, like the city manager, you know, given, the city manager, uh, power to sign a lot of stuff or to approve things like that, then, then citizens can be concerned about, well, you've got one person now deciding you can have a business, you can't, things like that. So I think if you want to, um, make some changes, it's good to do it through the zoning process, make zoning code updates. And we can, if you're interested in us looking at that, what's funny is every time we pass zoning code, we did it in 2016, we start a list of things that, okay, well, we need to look at that, we need to revisit this, because, you know, when you're doing, going through that whole process, well, you've seen the doc, the book, it's that big, and you think, well, we need to do this, we need to do that, or that's not working or whatever. We've already got lists going. And if it's something you want us to look at, um, with some of the changes we're gonna bring to you, Jackie and I discussed it, and I think there's some things we can maybe address in there that the concerns you have and bring it to you for some updates.
I mean, I'm concerned about this. I don't, don't know where everyone else is at with it, but I think that there definitely needs to be some changes discussed that would open things up a little bit and be less restrictive on what people can do with their private property.
I think they have zero impact on traffic or the air or the environment, um, outside of that, I don't, I don't know why we would wanna be concerned about it from a zoning perspective. I get it if you're gonna increase traffic, yeah, for sure.
And a big sign.
You're gonna make a big sign, you're gonna, you're gonna be out there or really stinking up the neighborhood with, with some exotic cooking that you're doing.
And you have a twenty-four mechanic in your driveway, yes.
Yeah.
Same, I get it, that makes sense.
And broken cars in your driveway.
Right, so this is something we can ask the planning commission to look at and to, uh, to really simplify that.
That's a cleanest way to do it.
Yeah, just, just for my information, how does the council procedurally interact with the planning commission? You mentioned in some of our discussions that these changes normally go through the planning commission. And so how, how do we interact with them procedurally?
So, um, at the, at one of your meetings, uh, council can direct planning commission to look at an issue. You can order them to look at an issue. So at a meeting, if you so decided you to pass a motion to have planning commission study this issue and set parameters that you want them to, that you want to guide their study, like focusing on home-based businesses that meet this, and then planning commission would have the responsibility of carrying that out and get, and get council a report back on that.
Okay.
Um, so that's probably a really excellent way to do it. And then it's kind of, once planning commission has reviewed it, it's gonna go back through, it's gonna be weird the way that happens. Once you kind of agree with it, then planning commission is gonna formally approve it and council will approve it again. So you might see it come around twice, but that will, um.
That's how that works?
Yes.
Okay.
So is that something we wanna put on the next agenda? Or does it need to be a formal agenda item then? Or I think we just ask here, just ask you guys have that conversation with planning commission and, um, hopefully, what, the next six months? Is that enough?
Oh, I would think three months, for sure. We just need to kinda, like Justin said, we'll probably look around and see if some other cities have done something similar, run it through the planning commission, then, and then bring it to you all and see if you're comfortable.
So should we talk about the parameters then of kinda what we're asking?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna, that's what I was gonna go. Sure. I like the approach of, you brought up too, is having a list of things that we want to say, you know, like, for instance, having, having cars, if you're gonna have, you know, we can set the number, more than two cars.
Do cars fit in your driveway?
Right, right. If, if cars are piling up in the street, that's one thing. Um, whether insurance is needed by the business. I don't know if we, how, how detailed we wanna get, but I think this, I think this is the right approach because, uh, I think anytime government has a, a kind of a, a general law that's very vague and broad and everybody, both government and citizens kind of all ignore it, that's a potential situation for disaster down the road, because once you get someone who's a stickler for things, wants to use that, you know, that can be a problem. And, um, I think government needs to be clear and concise on what, what the law is, what the parameters are. And I like that.
You're talking a business, right, Jeff?
Sure, yes.
Oh, I thought you meant I couldn't have three cars in my house.
No, I'm just thinking, uh, so like, what are the characteristics of a business that we wanna say, you know, are where those limitations start? Cars in the street being one and having insurance, you know, so that, so that the lawn mower business and the piano lesson business and whatever, that type of stuff can just happen naturally and it's not something we have to get involved with.
Yeah. And I think having a really clear definition of who it applies to, you know, that is really important.
And our, the purpose of this list is also to prevent, you know, kind of more, if you will, brick and mortar or kinda regular businesses seeing that ordinance and trying to take advantage of that in a, in the wrong way. We, so that's, that's what our thought, that's.
So for example, somebody that.
Just in listing types of businesses or you, so that's doing that, or you're just suggesting something a little more generic than that?
Well, the types of businesses looked like the approach that Oklahoma City had taken, you know, we're gonna regulate these types of businesses. And I think that that would be one option, I think. And the other option maybe is to specify some characteristics where if your business meets these characteristics, then you're exempt from needing to go through this process.
And I, this is kind of important. Are you meaning within the context of home-based businesses or you think?
Yes.
Okay. I thought you were, 'cause if you're talking more.
Yeah, no.
That's where I said much.
Where, where somebody, and I, I think it's important that, you know, the person lives in the home.
Right. So that's a lot easier.
Right, right.
That's a lot easier to create.
Yes.
So you don't, you know, because one of the things you wanna protect against is somebody buying a house and that's just my retail location now. So maybe you need to live in the house.
Right.
Right, yes. Yes.
And I think our home-based business definition is pretty comprehensive. It does restrict, um, it creates a definition where the person wouldn't even qualify unless they were living in the home and a certain percentage of the home were used for business. So I, I would say that would be a good place to start. And then from there, create either the lists of permitted or exceptions from there. And if you give a few, we can always have planning commission really flesh out with your goal in mind, a more complete list.
And I think that's what's important is for us to kind of identify what the goal is so that, you know, the planning commission has some freedom to think about what the best way to implement that is. And you obviously will help us think about that too, but.
So volume might be something you wanna consider in, in this sort of business.
You mean, you mean sound, sound volume?
Yes, decimals. We can be specific and find the appropriate decimal level.
And we already have a noise ordinance, haven't we, Jackie?
Yes, but this might even be more restrictive for a business, maybe.
Okay.
You wanna increase traffic, you don't wanna, to, to be concerned, you don't wanna have somebody, we're driving a bunch of drones and.
Right, right. No additional kind of. I think you have to have a ordinance for the drone.
That's what we're talking about.
Took some time.
That's what we're talking about.
She's talking about changing.
Yeah, I know.
Anything else on that or? If not, we're gonna move on to policies and it'd be a good idea to, uh, take a look at some of these policies, from time to time, especially, uh, kinda early on here. So we have four of them here and I see Tristan's with us, so thank you for being here. We do, uh, open here for mine, but, you know, it's right, it's the social media policy at that.
The, what, very, actually, we, Tristan and I, mainly Tristan, really worked through our social media policy. We created this back in 2013 and things were a lot different back then. And, you know, Trish and I have been talking about all the different avenues for social media and our website. And I know this council has a, um, a big input and, and sees that as a, a goal for us to increase our, um, social media presence, our advertising, those types of things. So, um, I asked Tristan to, you know, take what we had, see what other cities are doing, what is it that she's actually doing as far as Twitter and Facebook and our website, how are things working? And, and to come up with, to maybe update our policy and get your input as we do this. So Tristan, you wanna share kinda what some of the changes you made and what your goals are?
Um, uh, I made quite a few changes with this policy than the last one. Um, I updated our objectives. I believe to be a little more clear on what we were, um, wanting to do with our social media as far as informing citizens, citizens about the policy, programs, services, projects, um, and initiatives through communication. Um, so I made those objectives clear and I have those listed there. Um, it's basically what we are still doing now, but it out, it outlines it a little better in case someone comes and looks at it. Um, I included our platforms that we use for this and it includes our city website and maybe some of the processes that we use for that, and then the social media policy as well. Now, social media changed quite a bit and I had to include, um, quite a few more things about that, because now, not only do we have our Bel Air Facebook page and our Bel Air Twitter and Instagram and Nextdoor and all those different avenues, we have departments that are adding pages and wanting to, um, do their own type of marketing for their specific department. So I added in a whole section for authorized users and how those departments would go about, um, getting approval about that and how we would set that up and how we would allow that to still have some control. Um, because we do wanna give them, uh, that possibility of being able to, you know, shout out those things, but we wanna still be able to control, have our hand, like, have a, have a main control over that process. Um, and then we also did, um, clearly put our terms of use and our comment policy in this. Um, it mimics the same as what we did have. Um, we added a few things. And basically what that allows us to do, um, anytime someone adds a comment or, um, shares their opinion on it and it may be, it may have, you know, profane language or, um, is more about advertising for their business or, um, promoting some, you know, political issues or viewpoints, it gives us the ability to delete that. Um, and we can just say, go look at our policy and you will see why we deleted your comment. Um, and then the last section is about employee use. And it just gives a kind of a standard where city employees are still able to have their personal pages and it states that, um, they're allowed to say, you know, they're allowed to put out whatever they want, but it won't be looked at as an official city employee or a city, um, it's, it won't be looked at, let me see how I exactly worded it. Um, personal social media accounts established by employees should not be printed, presented as official voices of the city. So it kinda just states that. So then we don't, we can separate that.
I'm concerned about the context of that. Are you saying they could do that like on the city website?
No, not on the city website. The city website here has, um, the city website doesn't really have a place where people can go and write. The city website.
You're talking about some chat rooms or something like that?
Yeah, yeah. They can write on their own Facebook page, you know.
Or for example, Stacy, Stacy Cook, um, city clerk. Well, we wouldn't want that if it's her personal page.
She can't say, I am the city clerk of Bel Air on her personal website.
Exactly, exactly, yeah. Cause then the, it would appear that as city clerk, all the stuff she's putting out personally is.
Stacy's personal opinion is Stacy, city clerk.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, it's different and, yeah.
I see, okay.
So that was kind of a fast brief overview. So if I, if you have any other questions, you can, you know.
So on the terms of use and comment policy, when, um, those are being reviewed, who's responsible for reviewing and actually determining and executing on the removal of those things?
It would be the community development department or it would be the community development department for the main Bel Air pages. Now, that is something with our sub-department pages, I, that can, that department is still the administrator on that page. So we would still be able to delete those comments.
All right, website, is that, are you talking social media?
I'm talking on the social media. So reading through, you know, if people are posting things that are, you know, inflammatory or that are off-topic or not appropriate. I was just curious who's reviewing those to see that they're conforming to this policy and making that determination.
I would say it would be the responsibility of the administrators and editors on that page. Um, because the administrator is going to be whoever's the community development director. Um, and then the editors are gonna be the staff that's been put in that position to be an editor on their page. And they need to have the responsibility to make sure that any of those comments are following this terms of use. And they have the ability to delete that.
And then what we also do, well, in the case for our city web, or our city, uh, Twitter account, Tristan is the administrator. So she's putting everything on there. Um, for example, the rec center, they have a Twitter account. So Tristan is administrator, they can edit. Um, so that's when we're talking about administrator.
Yeah, there's different roles on each page.
If there's something, and we had some issues come up, uh, last fall when, um, the, uh, political, uh, the political activities were taking place for the city and some things would show up and Tristan would see those and she'd contact me. And then we would interpret the policy or if it was something that we felt was political in nature, we'd visit with Jackie and, um, to, to make sure she felt that it was political in nature and then we would delete it. So, uh, on, on all of our pages, Tristan is administrator and then the department can have some editors, but she always confers with me and then Jackie if we need to. But if someone's just latent swearing on there.
Yeah.
I, I was just curious how that would work logistically.
And I think what will happen now that we have this policy kind of put into place, um, I'll be able to help the editors, um, with some training on how to, you know, make their page, you know, up to the level that, where it's getting engagement and things like that. And with that training will come along where you know these terms of use and it's also your responsibility to make sure those get deleted as fast as possible. And also that you can't just delete comments if they're, you know, if they're something you don't like personally. You know what I mean? We have to follow these terms of use. So I think along with this policy, that allows me to be able to make sure that everybody is following the same rules. We're all consist, consistent in the brand, 'cause really, it shouldn't sound like different people are, you know, posting or commenting. We should all be a consistent brand. And so we should all have the same training and be able to.
Could you give us an idea of, um, just say, in the past year, and you don't have to give any specific examples, but like, how frequently do you have to delete something 'cause someone violates a policy?
Honestly, I have not deleted, I have not deleted a comment yet.
Oh.
Uh-uh. We had some things we kinda took a look at, um, but we, we, it was kind of a gray area during the campaigning. But we just kind of made a verbal like, hey, this is falling in this gray area. If you don't do it again, that would be great. Or we will start going through and deleting all these comments. Um, so actually, I never have had to delete a comment.
Okay, thank you.
Now, you gave an example of, you know, Stacy Cook, city clerk example. I have a Facebook page, Justin Smith, Bel Air City Council. Are we thinking that going forward, we won't do that in accordance with this policy?
No.
No, that, our concern with, with this is, you know, you, you all can have those. Um, and our concern was that, number one, we didn't want our employees putting out that they were representing the city, because, um, uh, that can create a lot of confusion. Secondly, we didn't wanna have too many webs, or too many pages out there. Uh, for example, you know, the chief's got one. Well, um, then we don't want, he, he's, his is kinda the police department. And so then we didn't want Fox having one and then somebody else and then, you know, our, our boroughs having one. And because then everybody gets diluted and no, you know, and that kinda stuff. So that was what we were trying to.
Well, I was just curious because, you know, I, I was thinking, we could be considered city employees since, um, we get paid a few dollars every month. And so I just wanna make sure that, you know, I still plan to maintain that page and wanna make sure it's clear that I plan to do that.
It'll be different is that I'm not an administrator on that page. The city has no foot in your page. We, so we are completely separate. Um, you can still act as a city council because that's, I mean, that's your job and that's your personal page.
Technically, you're not employees, even though you get paid, because, you know, you, you don't get benefits like employees do, um, retirement, all those kinda things.
Okay.
Darn.
There's city, cities that do that.
Should, should we have a, should we have a section that addresses that, that clarifies that? I don't know, I mean, not necessarily.
No, 'cause that's a personal thing. No, because that's a personal thing.
And I think what this personal employee use also goes more towards is if an employee would come and comment about like, if we put up this park master plan and an employee came up and said, "You know what, I don't like that park master plan," or something along those lines, or, "Oh, I love that park master plan." Everybody would be able to see this policy and say, "Oh, that is that person's opinion, that's not coming from the city." Or if they would say, you know, like, "It costs $4 million and they were wrong," we'd be like, "That's their personal," I mean, they came out there with that personal statement, that's not a city issued statement.
As long as we're all, you know, we're not city employees and the policy doesn't apply to us, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, because it's one thing for an employee to say something like that, something else for an elected official to say something like that.
Sure, sure.
Yep. And the goal is for you all as elected officials to talk to your constituents and that's done through Facebook and Twitter and stuff, so that's really important for you guys to do that.
Always tell them, "Call Ty."
Any other questions on the social media policy?
Is this a draft that you're wanting to propose? Is that what you're doing?
Yes.
Okay. I thought that was what you were saying. Would make sure.
All right. Thank you.
Looks good.
Thanks Tristan. Thank you so much. Look at the snow plowing policy, we do, you know, we don't have the amount of equipment needed to plow all the streets in Bel Air. You know, if a major snowstorm hit, but nor is it cost-effective to have all that equipment. Looking back over the last few years, limited amount of snow we received, so we created this policy to ensure that snow routes are open and can be maintained with the equipment we do have. It's important that council have input into this policy and, you know, we always get comments about plowing when snow does hit. I know there are a couple, there are only a couple times it's when we even had really do anything with the streets and got the main streets and like hills at the, you know, where there are some hills. I know, you know, I live on Odessa, coming down, there is a sharp and I really did appreciate the fact they treated that because you easily could slide right out in the wood lawn. And there's other places in the city, so.
Yeah.
But now we're, you want to talk about, you know, trying to find money for an investment in the park, you want to try to find money to have equipment that's going to be used once every 10 years to plow every street is-
We want to do that.
Yeah.
That's my opinion.
I'm going to favor that either.
Yeah, I think if it ever gets that bad, we'll all just stay here.
And just to let you know, you know, like I said, this was just more of an informational piece, so that, you know, if we do get ice or snow, you know, there's an actual policy that talks about that and really there's no other cities that do residential streets. I mean, because we get questioned and you'll get asked at if we get a snow event, you know, "Why don't you do my street?" Well, we don't because, you know, we keep our snow routes open for school buses and people getting to and from work, but we don't have the equipment, as the mayor said, to do that, nor does Wichita or any other cities do their side streets and stuff too, so.
It looked like the only residential street on here that was plowed was through the Central Park Main, kind of thoroughfare.
Yep.
And that's just against City Hall and the police.
That's a good word.
Yeah. It's very important.
No, I only had one comment from, not even a real citizen, it was the person's boss and they were talking about their boss, the business.
That's okay.
And they said, "Well, first, we only had to do, treat the roads twice this season, right? So the first season, and I know what happened, it was a January event and it rained and then it's, the ice froze and there was no opportunity for the crew to do anything with it because by noon the next morning, it all melted. But it was like, well, how come they're all iced in and they couldn't get around it? Well, it just wasn't on stage there. The crews couldn't do anything, I think they went out and worked it, but by the time they got it working, it started."
Yep.
How long does it take us to plow the route generally? Are we kind of at capacity on what we can do or are we under capacity or are we stretched really thin based on what's defined?
It's getting tougher, I mean, we're getting stretched, especially for our equipment because the two dump trucks we have are very old. In fact, one of them is one that we bought from KDOT, so it was one that they had used up and we now have and it costs a lot. And I know Ann's going to probably be bringing a proposal for a dump truck and, because that's what we use to do the ice spreading, I mean, the salt and sand and the snow plowing as well. So we only have two trucks that we can do that with and with the growth that's happening, you know, with rock spring and everything that's going on and then industrial park, I mean, you know, it's important to get out there so those businesses can be operating. So we're stretched pretty thin and, but they'll run 24-hour shifts if they have to and such and I think they can usually get around town in a day.
Do they, are we doing any pre-treating when we have weather threatening?
We don't now, but that's something that Ann wants to talk about with the new dump truck is maybe getting a unit that we could do some pre-treating. She's very interested in that, so we'll be talking about that.
It's tough because you're kind of out there with weather.
Exactly, yep.
You pre-treat it and then raining through the small way, that was always the time, but who has a crystal ball?
Exactly, yep.
Have we looked at alternatives on snow removal and pre-treating with, you know, evaluating, having somebody else do that or looking at those types of options? Since it's something where we're only using the equipment once or twice a year, you know, since it's something where we could contract with Cedric County or with, you know, another city around here that might have that equipment for those services?
We haven't. I'll tell you one concern with contracting with the county or another city is they would do their roads first and then they'd come to us. So, you know, they may be willing to do it, but we would have to wait until they got their roads done and then they'd come-
Six o'clock in the evening, we're all coming home.
Our roads would be cleared.
Dump trucks we have are used for many other uses.
Oh, yeah.
It's just the equipment that goes on it.
Yeah.
For, you know, the sand in the back of it and the plow in the front of it. I mean, I don't want people to think that we just have snow plows, you know, ready, sitting there for, you know, 11 and a half months a year, not used.
That's a really good point, yeah.
You know, we do use these trucks and everything for everything else, so.
Exactly, that's a great point, yep.
All right, any other questions on that? Okay, we'll talk about the rec center background checks. I know Jackie and, I've worked a long time, working on this, Jackie and Brian have, Brian Hayes is our director over there, this, you know, one only needs to look at the news and see what, hear what's happened, the disgusting thing that's happened to downtown YMCA to know that this is something we have to do and I want to make sure that everyone knows and that parents know that we have, we want to make sure we have the best practices to keep our kids safe with that. So Jackie and Brian have spent a lot of time on the policy, tightening some things up, making sure that we do have the absolute best practices, the best policies in place to protect our children and staff as well. So that's before us and that's something, if there's any input, any changes, you guys see, hopefully everybody's had a chance to read through that. Jackie can answer any questions if she would like.
I think it's a good policy, the only thing, only concern I had, and I think that's very trusty to you before Jackie, is that we want to make sure that we have a legitimate certifying agency doing those background checks, somebody not just putting a piece of paper out there, but actually adds doing something, check.
And after you said that, we thoroughly looked into the system, how they do it and who accredits them as well. And also, Brian just sent an email, the company we chose, several other cities use it, R.A. Derby and a couple other cities in the area, but the Recreation Commission of Kansas, so some state-level organization also went with the company that we would be potentially getting with if you decide to approve.
Okay.
Along those same lines, certain volunteers are exempt from the background check if the employee's contracted through a city agreement and somebody else has already done a background check on them. Do we need to specify that it's from a certain accredited institution and-
We can say that.
Be kind of interested in who does their background checks?
Yeah, that wouldn't hurt at all.
Okay, that's good.
I know something that Brian and I have wrestled with and wanted to have you all think about is, in light of the things that have been going on and the trends that some other cities are doing, we wrote in this policy that background checks will be done annually. Some cities, like more than half, do them every other year. Of course, the Y now is doing them way more frequently, I don't want to say, but I'm thinking like weekly or something like that, so.
I think annually is a minimum.
Yeah, I think that's good too. I think that was a good, really good, good policy.
Okay, any other questions? Appreciate all the time on that and certainly keeping our kids safe, so the final policy we want to look at tonight, we talked a lot about this at our last workshop, is the senior club policy. As you guys know, for the last 10 years, we've given $2,500. Thought I had to tease there, I'm sorry. We've given $2,500 a year to the senior club and last year, the previous council changed that to $4,000. $2,500 had already been sent and Ty and I both have spoken with the senior club president, Carolyn Smith, who said, you know, not only that the $2,500 is fine, but they're appreciative of that, but we had talked about that we want to leave the policy as is or do we want to go ahead and, you know, I think I'm the one who made the suggestion that we can, do we just want to change that word, they can request up to $4,000 and just add those words if they're, you know.
I think that'd be a great thing is to change it to senior club will receive $2,500 up to $4,000. Was it four?
Four, yeah.
And that way, I mean, you know, because there's obviously, that does give them a little flexibility. I mean, if there's something that comes up that is a priority that they would like to do, I'd like to help them out with that, absolutely.
Should we specify a specific number in there or should we just specify that it's up to the budgeted amount so that if the budgeted dollar amount changes, the policy doesn't have to change along with the dollar amount?
That's a, that would work.
You're going to give them, you're going to go ahead and give them the, what was it?
They're going to-
$2,500 and if they want the rest of the money, ask for the, up to $4,000. That's fine with me, because those poor people are going to have a crush sale. I don't know how they're going to do that.
So that way, if they want extra monies, they can request it within our policy, so.
And then change it to budgeted amount, that way.
Yeah, so it might read the senior club will receive the budgeted amount in January or up to the budgeted amount in January, I don't know exactly how that should be worded, but I'm just thinking if next year it's $2,600 or $2,400 or $4,100 or $3,900, the policy doesn't have that dollar amount embedded in it.
Oh, okay.
So as the dollar amount changes, it's just automatically reflected in the policy.
You just don't need an amount in there that you're going to give them to begin with, all right? Up to a certain amount, or do you want them to come ask for any of it?
Well, if you had the, if you just had the senior club will receive an annual budgeted appropriation, then at budget time, you'll talk about the senior funding and then you'll determine whether it's 2,500 or 4,500 or whatever.
I guess, I'm a little curious as how this currently works. I mean, at the beginning of the year, is this city writing a check to the senior center for $2,500? If I remember in the policy, it said something about it, they didn't spend it, they had sent it back.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they turn in receipts and report and refund.
So, so does the senior center need that upfront funding?
I mean, senior club, it is very imperative that we know.
Does the senior club need that upfront money? Is that something that makes sense?
I don't know if I should answer that because I belong to it.
Well, okay, all right.
Are you suggesting that maybe it'd be more of a reimbursement model instead of-
It could be a reimbursement model, I don't, and I don't know because I don't know a little bit about the finances to say, yeah, they need to have that or they don't need to have that.
I would just like to speak, you know, to that-
Because all the senior club members-
Yeah, I think the idea of giving them the $2,500 upfront, we've never had a problem getting receipts from them or if they haven't spent the full amount, getting the difference back or taking out the next $2, we've never had. And the reason for that is, like you say, yeah, then, because if they pay upfront and then submit, I mean, we're talking some folks who are limited.
Ninety and so.
And, you know, to wait to get a refund of money out of their budgeted amount, you know, $2,500 is a small amount, like I said, they've been happy with how that has worked, so I don't know, but I want to change that.
Yeah, I was just trying to more or less learn how the money transfers are working, not so much propose a change, I just wanted to know-
Right, and that's-
How does this function?
Yeah, that's how it works, so before they get the next allotment, we have to have receipts and they document, they also give us the names of people who went on, if they say we spent X amount of dollars on this trip to go to this and we learned this, here's the nine people that went, here's the 21 people who went, whatever. Also, then we use their numbers, even though they're not part of the senior citizen, the senior center, we're able to use those numbers then that we go to apply to for the county grant, so.
Right, okay, that's fine, I'm not proposing any change there, I just wanted to stand out for it, so.
Well, and they're getting older too, because we have a lady that's 99 that belongs to this group and there's quite a few that are in their late 80s, on pushing there, but they're, they're pretty active. I mean, they do games on the first Thursday of every month, I think it was first Thursday. They go out for breakfast, they go out for lunch. The majority of them, I think they had 16 that drove to Cedric, Kansas, to hoof and horn yesterday for lunch and they drive their own cars, they pay their own lunches, I mean, they don't take that out of this money. They use this money that you give them mainly for trips.
Educational.
Educational things. Now, normally they try to get speakers for educational that comes, that doesn't charge them. They do a lot of that and if there's a, like, somebody passes away, they give a $10 memorial, but they take up either a collection or it comes out of their, it doesn't come out of the city money.
Okay. All right, so we'll change that to up to the budget, so that way they can, all right. Move on to our final item, 2018 priorities, just, you know, we're somewhat fresh off of the campaign season. Good idea, just that way we can kind of talk with, you know, let staff know if there are specific priorities so they know, hey, this is a priority we can focus on, that way not chasing their tail and we don't want to come to every meeting and, oh, we need this and we need to know this, we need to know how much you spend on toilet paper, we need to know how much you do, you know, on, you know, how come you got, you know, CD can save $5 on phones, whatever, unless you think they need to shop, so, you know, what are some priorities? Do you guys have specific priorities right now? I think the staff does a really good job, I like the way how that Ty gives us a weekly update and Tristan's sharing updates with the newspaper and the social media and the communications. I think it's working, working pretty well, but if there are specific priorities, I know we talked earlier in the workshop, that certainly coming up with ways to fund this park, I think it's absolutely a priority, I would say that's something that we need to start working on almost right away would be something. Certainly keeping the level, budgeted level of street repairs and of course constantly looking for if there are cost-effective ways that, more cost-effective, I think Ann does a really good job of bringing, you know, just like, what was the other one? What's it going to cost? I can't remember what it was, but I'm making up numbers here, but $90,000 to do two of them or we can do $60,000 now and $60,000 later, well, let's go and do $90,000 and do them both at once, that type of thing, so.
Well, I'll speak, I think my biggest priority is wanting to work with the council and with Marlin and Jerry and everyone to set some goals for our land sales. I think it'd be really good for our community to understand over time how the- how the city-owned land has decreased and what that trend line is, so that we can project out the future of our land sales. And that can help us set some goals and milestones to work for, towards, to help us understand if we're doing a good job as the city council and the city, working to eliminate that land and that land debt. That's something that is on everyone's mind in the community. As I went door to door, everyone wants us to be out of the land development business and wants the land debt to go away, so that we can fund our street projects and our infrastructure projects, and do more fun things, like build really nice parks for the community. And so, that, that's the number one thing on my mind, is putting, putting together that plan, getting some of that visibility to the plan on where do we think we're gonna be at five years from now with the land? Where are we gonna be next year with the land? Set some goals and some milestones that we can work towards together.
I, I guess I want to ask, you know, specifically, I, I think it's hard, I mean, obviously, you know, my mind, I have a, a dream that I, you know, that this park is built tomorrow, and we have, and two fifty fours filled with hotels and major retail restaurants, and celebrities are moving here, you know? I mean, but, you know, if we set specific goals, I, I want to be careful that we don't say, you know, hey, we're gonna have a new restaurant this year, we're gonna have a new, um, um, a new something or other in the Commerce Park, we're gonna, at the end of the year, then we, because I, I like the idea that we're able to be somewhat picky about what goes in, we don't want.
And, and.
I get what he's saying, though. He's saying, just as a general guideline, what has been sold, what has been sold in the past, and then projecting out, like, how much longer it's gonna take to maybe get rid of the, the rest of the land type.
Gotcha, okay.
I'm thinking in terms of dollars of debt and acres of land that the city owns.
The first five years we sold, uh.
Right, and I think what can help with that is a visual, is a visual aid, is like a graph, a running graph of where the budget is, or what the projections are. So, we can look at our, look at our recent history and see what, how we've been doing.
I mean, the goal is zero, zero.
Right, right.
And so, when are we gonna get there?
See where, where it's going.
I just want to make sure that we're on the.
Yeah, just projecting out, just kind of based on past performance.
But not setting specific.
Yeah, well, and I, I think those, you know, projections, we should be able to say to, say, you know, next year, we're targeting a sale of twenty acres of land and reducing the let, debt by a million dollars, you know? I'm just making up numbers. I, I don't have numbers specifically in mind, but there should be some reasonable numbers that we can commit to.
Past performance, is basing that off of. If we do better, great. If we don't do better, what do we need to do better? And, and just kind of have, have those ideas for, yeah. I mean, I, I think that's a.
If, if that trend line shows five years until the debt's gone and the land is sold, then, you know, I'm gonna feel really good about that. Probably if it shows thirty years, that may drive us to want to take some different action.
Drive us to drink.
Right? And so, based on what those numbers show us and what we kind of discuss, I think that can influence the decisions that we make.
And, and, uh, I'll speak a little bit, just let you know, we're a couple months, two, three months away from our first budget presentation, and Ted has done a really good job of showing some of that, so see if we can't get some of that to you beforehand, and, um, apologize for not having that, but, or, make sure there's more of a little emphasis on that. But that's a good way, so, yeah, those are numbers that he's getting, so let's absolutely maybe make more of a visual.
Sure.
I'm just making sure I'm hearing everything correctly, more visual. Because the numbers are shared with us that we have sold X amount of homes, and the year before we sold X amount. We project that we're gonna do, sell this money this year, therefore, this is how much budget we have, just, yeah.
And maybe, maybe as we start to look, as that develops into a plan with a timeline on it, we can layer in things like phase one of the park gets built, you know, at this point in the plan, and phase two of the park gets built in at this point, you know, at this point in the plan. And we can really start to think about it as a, you know, a, a project plan, or with, with milestones on it.
Just please don't take away the principal and interest off of the land that we sell, going back toward the debt.
Reducing our debt is, I think, is a real priority.
Because we got, what did we give, what did we do in the last four years now?
We've sold, well, I mean, we've put in addition what, almost three million just towards principal.
Because there for a while, when I was still working, we were, I shouldn't say this.
I just.
Robin Peter to play part to make the debt payment.
So, yeah, and the ci.
Came up with that, and it helped.
Yeah, the city's made great strides, and we continue to move forward. I'll say it, five years ago, maybe even four years ago, maybe, or at least three years ago, I never would have dreamt that we'd be able to have a master park plan where we can invest as a way to get us out of debt faster.
Right.
That, that was, that would not even have been, oh, wait a minute, you've gotta do something else? You gotta spend more money to get, yeah. We couldn't even have that conversation three years ago, so, but here we are. And things are looking good, and we'll get those numbers forecasted.
And I do like the new signs on Wood Lawn, that the community.
The banners?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, those, the blue ones.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, our color's blue.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, uh, um, I want to echo what, what Justin said, um, and also, um, obviously, our, our road maintenance and prioritizing, uh, we got the ball rolling with Anne on, uh, on, uh, both maintenance and, you know, our future, uh, Wood Lawn project and the planning of that. But it's really important to not have, uh, things be neglected. I think another thing just, just to mention is something that I'd like to see on the forefront of our, um, mind as well, is, is the condition of the current parks that we have, um, to make sure that, uh, I, I know as the season goes along, the parks get wear and tear on them. And, um, you know, we need to make sure that we're not letting any of the, any of the city parks go into, uh, disrepair, or, um, you know, like, I know one of the, at Eagle Lake Park, one of the things that happens is lots of the, the sand gets pushed out of the volleyball pit and, and, you know, that kind of thing. And, um, you know, I, I really, we need to strike that balance between, um, the new things that we're pursuing to create, and then also the things that we have. We want to make sure that they're, they're maintained and kept well, so, um, yeah.
But I also think that we need to focus a lot on the infrastructure of the older area, because we've put those people off a long time, fixing their streets, their curbs and gutters.
Absolutely.
This is worse.
It seems like every time we come up, we're gonna go over to Geringrich, or we're going to Fifty-third, or, and then you're gonna start getting phone calls, hey, what about my street? And we did get, set money aside last year for Pedro, because it had never been done since that development had been put in. And those people were, well, in fact, they brought the petition, didn't they, Mayor? To the council, because they got tired of waiting. But some of these streets, oh, you go down Belmore, you better not ride a bicycle down that street over in Pearson's, it's terrible.
There's a lot of streets that need to repair, and then something that Anne's highlighted in conversation with me is that focusing on repair is really good, but also focusing on the preventative maintenance is really important, because it's so, so much cheaper to put down sealant and maintain our brand-new roads than to let them deteriorate for ten years and have to spend millions and millions of dollars to replace them.
It is, but look what they did to the infrastructure in Pearson's and Eagle Lake and Summit Hill. They let those go for, it's been over, what, ten years?
So, let, let me ask, ask you this. We're all saying street repairs, we're all saying major dollars for street repairs. We all, this question was brought up at both forums. We have a, an election coming up. Do we want to put a sales tax on the next ballot to see if the citizens want to pay for a, what do we have, a one cent? We actually, we had one, the city had a, uh, sales tax initiative on the last election, the same time, and, I know we're in a public meeting, I shouldn't say it, but the city of Wichita did such a poor job with theirs that it got voted down, and, and there's a lot of carryover that ours was voted down. And even so, it was voted down, but not by anywhere near the margin that the city of Wichita's was.
I just, I really don't think it'll carry, Mayor. I don't know.
I'm not saying if it really won.
It won there and.
I'm not a fan of it.
I'm not either.
I think that it's a very hurt cell, and we're, and I know, and I'm not faulting where we are, it's just where we are. We have a lot of land debt, and we, we have had it for a long time. We gotta find the answer to that one.
Well, okay.
And that's where our money is. And that's exactly what the citizens are saying, and I think that's where we gotta.
Well, that was one of the things that came out in the survey, if we put it on the ballot, and I am not advocating for or against, I'm not saying if I would vote, you know, but put it up to the citizens, let the citizens vote if they are willing to pay, uh, additional sales tax or whatever, that absolutely, you know, we can, don't need to set anything specific now, but if that's something we want to do, we can have that conversation, and it's up to the citizens. Um, I'm kind of springing this on you, that's something we want to talk about here, because, I mean, I'd certainly want to have a sunset clause, you know?
My, my part is, I mean, I think we've got a decent, uh, road plan, you know, with how Anne has things prioritized. I think it's pretty decent, and I think that as we continue to go along, it's just gonna get more and more budgeted for roads, and, and, you know, like Jeff said, uh, you know, doing the preventative maintenance is gonna help negate a lot of costs down the road as well, um, along with fixing the major issues. But, you know, one of my priorities is, is kind of thinking outside the box and seeing how we can get some of these things taken care of. Um, I know I had a, a meeting with Jackie, um, and we're going to, uh, talk to, you know, USD two-five-nine and, and find out exactly kind of what it is Bel Air's allowed as far as the neighborhood, neighborhood schools here. Um, and then, you know, I want to take that information, pass it along to the builders that are building in Bel Air. I want to pass that along to, to RIS, which is the real, uh, realtors of South Central Kansas. So, the realtors know that when they're showing houses in Bel Air, they can tell people, look, you know, this is High School District, but Bel Air, because they have a city school, they're allowed this many people, or whatever the case would be, so I'm trying to get specifics.
The number of kids.
Well, I'm trying to get specifics on, on that, oh, I gotta get the information before I can do that. But if, if, if we can do that, we can help generate more houses, which is gonna help generate more business, which is gonna help generate more money, and we could do a lot more things for the city as far as the roads, the infrastructure, the parks, everything. I mean, you know, dominos have to fall, and figuring out how to get there is every city's problem. So, that's, that's, you know, what I've started doing to try to generate some of this.
See, when they first built those two schools, they said all the kids in Bel Air could go there. Then, when they had that downfall and schools were having a problem, they said, no, only twenty-five percent can go there now. And they bust all those other kids in. I think they did raise it to thirty.
Yeah, and it, it's because it's a magnet school, and, and Bel Air, I mean, we're not even, we haven't reached the number.
They were supposed to be Bel Air schools, period.
Well, Isley is completely open to all Bel Air students.
Isley is?
Isley's completely open to all Bel Air students.
Because it wasn't a couple of years ago.
Yeah, I know, but that's what it is today. The Northeast Magnet, they have a, a cap on it, but you have to apply. And if, if, if I were to set the policy, what I would, would propose is that they remove the cap and say all Bel Air citizens go to Northeast Magnet.
And that'd be a big goal.
And the school has no problem with capacity, it's, it's only about seven-hundred-and-fifty students right now, and it has capacity for over a thousand.
Yeah, the issue is until they change it from a magnet school to a traditional school, you can't do that, because.
It still has to have an application, just because it's standard policy for everybody, but.
That's, that's a policy of the, of the school district. They can, they can fix that policy if they want it.
They could, but they're not going to.
Right.
Straight up, they're not going to. But that's why we need to get the information out that, that the people of Bel Air do have priority.
Right.
They do have to apply, but it's a very simple process. I mean, really, if you want to, if anything's worth doing, you're gonna take a little extra time to do it. But I think there's a lot of people that don't realize that they have that option, so.
Right, and you're right, getting that out to them is very important, and we need to do that, yes.
Back, back on the, the roads a little bit, I know we've talked about it quite a bit. We, we have made a lot of progress, I think, in a road plan and, you know, understanding what the priority list is for the roads. I'm not sure that I personally have a good picture of what good would look like from an ongoing road plan, and what good would look like from a budgeted amount. Um, you know, it feels like the, our roads could be this endless black hole of funding, I'm just, and, and I know we've got a lot of catch-up to do, so that's probably gonna be true for a while. But I think maybe starting to understand, you know, if we were to implement just today the, the maintenance policies that we needed to going forward, what would that cost us? Some of that information, um, would be really useful for us.
Yeah, I think if we can work out, uh, Mr. City Manager, to get some, tie those numbers to some visualizations, just, you know, I think, I think graphs do a really good job of, of showing, you know, amount, and get, helps, it helps us know.
I'm Mr. Engineer.
As a percentage.
I agree.
Yeah, we, we need to have kind of a running idea of, okay, what is, um, where we're at on our budget, right? Because we know, you know, um, we can talk about the numbers and look at everything on an Excel spreadsheet, um, but it's not until you put those into, um, you know, some meaningful, uh, charts and graphs to kind of, that helps give you a perspective of kind of where you're at, where you want to get to. And, um, you know, that'll go a long way with me, just making sure, um, I'm aware of kind of where, you know, where, where are we at on that? How much, how much, uh, work have we completed this year so far? I mean, I, I know we haven't started because of the season we're in, but, but, you know, looking ahead six months, we want to be able to have some data that says, hey, look at, this is what we've done since, you know, March and April, this is, you know, the projects that we want to complete, these are all the projects, and, you know, we kind of prioritize as we go. But, you know, I think we're, we got a good start right now. We have a list of streets and areas and, and the things that are, uh, currently, um, prioritized. And then I think within that list, we can break those down and, and look at, uh, you know, and then we, we can get an idea of where we are in our, our annual budget for the, from there on out. And once we go through a season of that, that'll give us more information for moving ahead. And, um, that kind of, the idea of, of tracking progress is, I think, is really beneficial for me, and I think, I think all of us, and, and then, um, the citizens as well, that, that's how we can get that, answer that question of where are we at right now, right? Because when it's just numbers, it's really tough to get a good, good sense of that, so.
Sure.
One, one baseline that would be good to have, if, if Anne could come up with this, assuming the roads were in recent shape, and she was in a maintenance mode.
Okay.
What would a maintenance budget look like?
Okay, yeah.
I mean, that'd be a baseline that we'd say, we never want to go below that. We always want to be above that, and, and above that, how many dollars? Like, if it's a hundred thousand dollars for maintenance, which may be low, I don't know, may be right, I don't know what it is. Uh, what do you need to be, do to be above that?
Okay. And I think we're all talking about roads so much, because we've all recently talked to a lot of people in Bel Air, and that's the first thing that people brought up to me, you know, so.
Yep.
Well, you know.
Not only that, they're gonna call you through the year.
Mr. Mayor brought up the, uh, the idea of, um, putting forth a ballot issue to have a, a tax to fund roads. Now, I'm trying to think back, back, what, what was the la, what year was the last time we did that as a city? We, it was recent history, right? What, it was?
Two, three years ago?
It was one, yeah, and it was, uh.
I remember it.
Yeah, it was. Was it 2014?
Could've been, and that might be.
I was about to.
I, I don't remember the exact year, I remember.
For roads?
I thought it was for roads.
I don't know what.
We had to raise taxes to pay the bill.
I don't know if they raised.
This wasn't a mill levy increase, this was a ballot, ballot vote.
Sales tax.
Oh, okay.
Was it a sales tax? I don't even remember.
It was a sales tax.
It was a sales, and it got voted down.
Yes.
And I don't know if, if correctly, or if I have this wrong, but it seemed to me that was only gonna yield fifty thousand a year or something like that, right?
Yeah, yeah, we don't have a lot of businesses.
There's not a lot of retail business that has a sales tax on it.
Is, it was a sales tax that you were throwing out as a, as a possibility?
Right, and, and I should say, if that's something we decide to do, we cannot campaign for or against.
Right.
It's our, okay, we answer questions. If I vote yes, and how much, what will, we cannot be advocates for or against as a governing body.
Right.
So, it would simply be, it's on the ballot, um, and you'll see a couple grassroots groups that'll pro and against, and we provide the information of, if you want, uh, if you approve this here, is how much we expect to collect these five years, and these five years we'll do. In these five years, we'll do da-da-da. That's, that's how that works. And then it's up to the citizens. It's not, and I like that a lot better than us raising the mill levy.
How about vote for that?
You know, so, you know, that's something that we haven't had to do in a number of years.
Right. Yeah, I think, I think keeping the mill levy where it's at, I think, I don't see a reason to, to change it and certainly...
I think it's funny high.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you know...
We're, we're trying to get people to move here and, and buy properties, so...
Yeah, in, in my own research, you know, where Bel Air sits in terms of all the other cities surrounding Wichita, we're, we're in the middle of the road where our mill levy is at. We're not exceptionally high, we're not exceptionally low. We're kind of middle of the road and I think that's, that, I think that's great. I, I certainly don't want to advocate for changing that where we're at. And like, like Jim said, the, you know, the, the land debt payment is the, the noose around our neck as a city.
The noose around...
And...
I, I do like the idea. I want to, I want to, for a second, that...
No, that's okay.
A more, maybe we do a little bit more promoting of that, because I still want to do. Our, you know, Bel Air is, you know, water's so high. No, our water really isn't.
Right.
If we do a little bit better job of broadcasting and, you know, for that, same thing.
Something I think is, is another one of those priority things. I think we do need to do, find better ways of over-communicating.
Well, I, I can, I can share just what I've learned, you know, since I'm on the Chisen Creek Utility Authority Board. You know, I've learned an awful lot just being exposed to those meetings and the, the information there.
Yeah.
And, you know, the, you know, the, the main conclusion that I've kind of realized is that, you know, it, it is purely market forces. Where we're at, you know, our water availability and all that, that's our costs. They're, they're, you know, our costs are what, what they are right now. And it's, you know, there's a, that's a lean operation that Chisen Creek Utility Authority. It's a lean group. They've got a good leadership there with the manager. And, you know, you know, I, when, 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 when the talk of the town is, hey, these water, you know, the water bills are high, you know, it's, in comparison to all the other types of, you know, fees and, and costs associated with the city, you know, we're, we're, where we're at and there's no, you know, red beacon going off saying, hey, there's this big problem that needs to be fixed. It's, you know, it's the market forces at work. And, and, you know, we're, as a city, we're, it, it's as low as we can get it right now with what we have. We need to keep looking at, you know, options and, and things, but it's, you know, it's, it's, it's difficult to see, you know, where we're going to go to change things, you know.
Well, there was a, there's two policies, ones for sewer and ones for water. And they, see, the sewer's off, right, isn't it? On the 3% and 6%?
Yeah, so, yeah, they're both back to 3%.
Did it drop down automatically back to 3% on sewer and it's still 5% on...
That's back to 3% on water, too.
3% on water?
What's this, the tax?
We had it, we had to borrow money to make a payment to CCUA, wasn't it?
No, what we did was we had a...
Oh, I know now.
A study on, you know, what, kind of what you guys were talking about, about, you know, where are we today? What kind of improvements do we need to make? What are our needed revenues? And then they came back with the suggestion of, okay, so next year you need to increase your sewer by 5% and then 7%, 3%, you know, for water and sewer. And that was a five-year plan. And so, and then once the five-year plan was over, it drops back to automatically 3% increase is what we do.
So...
So what do we do with that 3% on each, the water and the sewer?
Goes into the water and sewer funds.
Okay.
Yep.
Is that ever going to come off?
That's going to be up to you. And in fact, we...
Well, that would only lower 3% on water and sewer both, but...
The difficult part is what, and what you all have been talking about, which is important, is infrastructure. And we're not putting money, enough money towards infrastructure in water and sewer replacements. And so that's our issue. You know, we're meeting all of our, we're, we're lean. We're meeting all of our expenses. But we're not doing replacements.
And I think what's tricky to measure is the cost of the deterioration over time. And so by not doing maintenance on things and not keeping things up, we're accumulating debt in a different way, right? Our sewer lines are deteriorating and that's effectively hidden debt on our balance sheet. Our streets are deteriorating and that's effectively hidden debt on our balance sheet. And we don't really have a good way to quantify that right now to, to know where we're at.
And then...
Wait till that water line breaks.
You look at, you look at the, the budget for the CCUA and half of it's debt maintenance. Okay, I get it. I'm not faulting anybody. It's half of us debt maintenance.
Yeah. So, I was looking some stuff up here. The, it was November 2014 that we had the sales tax on the ballot. That was also the general election. So had quite a bit of things on, that was the big, the big thing was the Supreme Court retain or don't retain. So a lot of attention was paid to, to that election. Ty has quoted, and we had our budget that it would have brought in $200,000 a year for 10 years. So it would have brought in $2 million, which at that time, now I'm remembering, we would have been able to, to bond real easily, take care of all the roads and have all of our roads in really good shape now. And the referendum lost, 1,554 were no's, 1,233 were yays. So we're talking 211 votes separated that compared to, with the Wichita sales tax, their no was 64,487 and yes was 38,803, almost a three to one margin there. At the same time, Valley Centers also was defeated by a vote very similar to ours, 1,282 no, 1,018 yes. So to, to say, you know, we had 1,233 vote yes and 15, 54 no, so...
Mr. Mayor, was, was that specific for road mains at the time?
Yes, yeah. And that was one thing that I remember, probably find there's an article, because I was quoted in that where I said, yeah, ours is specifically streets. Ann had presented, we had two public meetings. If I can find the article that had all that information. We had town hall meetings. We had, I think, two specific ones. And it was set and it had a 10-year sunset on it and that was the projection. As a matter of fact, by law, we could only put it towards street. And we had a plan where the $2 million, how, that was the number it came up with. It said, each, this is a combined article, Bel Air and Valley Center. Each city has proposed a 1% sales tax for street improvements. Bel Air, Bel Air's ballot measure calls for the tax to pay for general local street plan. Valley Centers is specific to 10 streets. Bel Air's sales tax would start in January and run for 10 years. It would be, bring in an estimated $200,000 a year, said Ty Lasher, City Manager. The city borrowed $1 million this year for road improvements and funds from the tax would help pay off that debt. He said it would also help pay the city's share, about $700,000. This is what we talked about with the project. So that's what we were going to do with that. Then use that other money to go towards the, the streets. So, yeah, we held town hall meetings in October. Valley Centers was going to start in April. And then just, yeah, so we, yeah, had a specific plan and...
I don't think they're going to go any better now than they did then.
Well, I mean, we don't know, but, yeah.
Well, put it on there. I think you got to pay for it, don't you, to put it on the ballot?
Well, it's what, a couple of...
No.
No, no, for a municipality.
If there's one that's already, if there's a special election, we'd have to pay for it. But if we were to attach it to a general...
Like the governor's primary.
Yeah, then it wouldn't be a cost.
So I have, I have a question and that would be, isn't, as, as a sales tax, is that the only form that a ballot initiative could take?
Oh, we can put...
A sales tax, yeah, has to be done through a, a ballot. You could do a referendum if you wanted to raise the mill levy. You could raise the mill levy in the budget process, just doing that. Or if you were concerned about that, you could do a referendum, which is simply just asking the citizens, would you support a two-mill increase for streets? And you could put that on a ballot as just a simply a question referendum.
Okay. Thank you.
That'd be something, again, we really, this kind of goes back to the policy Trista was talking about. You know, if we were to do that, you know, we can't be quoted in the paper and say, everybody's got to vote for this or we got to vote it down. It's, no, this is, it's up to the voters.
You can't talk about it.
We can talk factually.
Yeah.
But we cannot have an opinion. On it. That way it's, you know, if, if the voters vote for it, the, the good thing with that then is it's, hey, the voters did it. So it's there. We didn't do it. Yeah? And we do want to do it the way the citizens are. So, not, not something we need to decide tonight. That, do we want to have further discussion about doing that? Look at these priorities? I mean, if you look at the survey results, some, you know, wasn't there, was someone even said that they were willing to, this doesn't have all of that. This is just about the park, but...
Oh, you're talking about the survey was talking about whether the...
They were willing to pay for road improvements.
Willing to pay for...
I, I don't have that in front of me, but...
There was, there was a majority of the response, I can't remember the number, but it was a majority of the response that said they would be willing to pay a sales tax for that type of road.
Because they wanted better roads.
I'm open to discussing it further. What I, what I heard from citizens was overwhelmingly that they wanted us to solve that problem through getting rid of our land and using money that we're already collecting. And so that, that's at the forefront of my mind is how, how can we do that?
That's the same position I have too.
We can, Jackie and I can do some research and let's just give you an idea of, because there's a process you're going to have to go through. You have to, I think it's a, I'm not sure if it's an ordinance or a resolution, but you'll have to pass something that puts it on the ballot. And then they have to know a certain time before the ballots, the election and stuff. So we'll give you, we can just do some research, but general research and give you some, you know, kind of a timeframe and what's coming up and what, what the fees would be and, just so that you have it.
Wait, I guess, could you clarify what, what you, what you meant, Councilman Smith?
Yeah, I guess what I was saying is that I'm, I'm open to discussing it and, you know, talking about these options. But my, my primary preference based on what I heard going door to door was that the community thinks that we need to make our street improvements and our infrastructure improvements through the selling of, of the assets that we have and the elimination of the debt, of the debt, freeing up the funds that are currently occupied by that and putting those towards infrastructure items as opposed to raising taxes to, to do those things.
Right. That, that's, that was my experience too. I just wanted to make sure that was, and, and I agree with that because that was my experience in talking to citizens as well.
They're tired of paying the bankers.
I, I, I know, I know. I think...
Not that we have things against bankers, but, you know, it's something...
And there's not a one of us sitting here that doesn't want to make the land debt go away, guys. I mean, it's, and I'll just tell you, my gosh, where we are today.
We're out of the hole.
Hole, you know, I, I remember vividly eight years ago, sitting in two packed, packed rooms where we talked about giving up the city charter, where we talked about closing the rec center, where we talked about basically eliminating, you know, not even having a police department, getting rid of all of those things. And citizens came out and said, no, we want to remain a city. Citizens came out and said, no, we, we want to keep our police department. We like that and we're willing to pay for it. And we haven't had to raise taxes since then. I don't think there's one of us sitting here that's a fan of wanting to raise taxes. And I'm not proposing we do that. Matter of fact, I would be against that. But I am more than willing to put it before the citizens and letting the citizens decide how important this is. You know, and I think one could argue, yeah, we want to get rid of the debt. And so, yeah, maybe we need to invest in the natural gathering spot. It's going to cost a little bit, but in the, if it really does get us, finally propel that, so we're not just selling a little bit at a time in the Commerce Park, which we're doing great, great guns going there. If we need to have a sales tax or if the citizens tell us, go ahead and raise my mills, I'm going to, I'm not going to vote, I can't vote, but don't want to propose a mill increase, but if the voters tell me and tell us, yes, we will and we want to pay two more mills to, if you get the streets done in five, you know, I, I think we should have that conversation because that's the other argument, too. We do hear from that. Realtors are, will they bring people into Bel Air or are, are streets are crap? So part of that, it's, this is a double-edged sword. We can keep juggling and what comes first, the chicken or the egg? We've got to put our best foot forward to get out of debt and to continue to attract new people. And that includes streets. How do we do streets? You know, but we have to have streets to, to, to sell land. We can't sell land without the streets. You know, these are things that, you know, cans that have been kicked down the road and kicked down the road. And we're seeing major improvements this year that, you guys are probably tired of me saying this, that two years ago, we weren't making. The tide has turned and we're making great strides. That's why I say, you know, is now the time that we try this and, and let the citizens have the power and the citizens to tell us for that. And really think about all these different options that we can do to get us out of debt. In my opinion, getting us out of debt means that we have good roads so that when people come in, they see. In my opinion, it's having that natural gathering spot so that when we're going to commercial and retail establishments and they know there's this crowd and they see this and they see the new stuff and they see that it's a city just not trying to survive and it's a city with a plan and it's a city with a vision and a city with a future. And things may suck for a couple of years, but how's that go? Great skies are going to clear up. I, I, I'd like us to have further conversation before we just kibosh, taking things to the citizens and letting them decide.
I'm willing to have further discussion. I don't think I have anything else to add tonight.
Let's go home. It's 9 o'clock. Check clocks.
Change the clock, yeah. What, what are the thoughts over here on that?
I think the way I hear from the citizens is that we already did Field of Dreams, buying the land, and that didn't work. And they're not wanting to do another Field of Dreams. And I think that right now, the heart idea is Field of Dreams. I get it. Maybe it has the potential. And, and, you know, I have a business background. I understand the, the potential for the increased value of the property and that makes perfect sense. But we're a city. We're not investors. And we're, we're acting like investors. I think that our real goal and our real focus should be finding investors to take this land, buy it and do it.
And lose all control then?
I'm sorry?
And then we lose all control?
You don't lose all control. You still have some of the control over that land, just like you do today. And, and so you don't lose all control. Yeah, you, you, you don't get to pick and choose who buys what parcel because that's an investor does that. But you at least get some, get out of this, this, this quagmire that we're in today. And once we get out of that quagmire, I'd be, I'd be running great guns to go do this park thing and make that happen.
We'll do that in 30 years then. We'll do that in thirty years, then. I mean, that's.
And that's, and that's what it's, looks, that's what it will be.
That's what I'm saying, I, I don't want, I don't wanna have a city council thirty years from now having these same damn discussions.
Right, and I don't either, and I wanna, I don't wanna get aggressive about getting this land into an investor's hands, who, who, that's, that's their business, that's what they do.
And you know what? Investors have had ten, twelve years to buy this land.
I just, I, to, to differ with you, sir, I, I think that they have, we've just not gone to the, the investors to do it, okay? We put it, we put together a, a development plan, that's great, but I remember talking with Harold Smith even before, when he was the mayor, and saying, yeah, we didn't do much to market that land, and he was sorry about that, and he apologized for that, okay? Well, okay, so, we went from not doing anything to doing the Sunfire Park and those things, and those are good ideas, don't get me wrong, but they're, they're a city being, being the developer.
Because we've been forced to be. And if you have the name of an investor, please, by all means, let us know, let him know.
And I, if, if I come up with some, I will let you.
Yeah, and, and that's, yeah, and that's what I'm saying, we're not, none of us have this rabbit to pull out of a hat right now.
Right, okay.
But we have this golden opportunity right now, and can be the governing body that, you know, we've turned this corner. Where's it gonna be two years from now, five years from now, ten years from now? So are you, I'm, I'm just asking the question here, we've heard from one council member, they are willing to have further discussion on if we wanna put something before citizens or not, as far as a referendum or, uh, sales tax?
I'm always willing to talk, okay? My current view is, I'm not a fan of any increase in taxes, okay? But always willing to talk.
Here's the thing, though, we, I mean, obviously, none of us wanna increase the mill levy, but if we put the sales tax in front of citizens, it's their choice then, it's up to them, and then, it's either yes or no, and that stops the conversation. So, it's not a big deal to put it in front of them, especially something that's not this big a deal, that, eh, you know, affects every one of them, to put that in front of them, let them answer.
The, the earliest that you could even do that, I think, and, and, you know, I'm not trying to be, to talk to the legal aspect of it, that's, that's Jackie's job, but I think the earliest you can do that is in the fall. If you did it at the primary, you cut out the independent voters, those that are not.
Good call.
Policy, okay? Not affiliated with the policy.
Yeah, I don't find if we raise the farm, yeah.
It gives, it gives people more time to think about it, too. I'm not trying to rush anybody into a decision, but the simple fact is, if we put it in fr- in front of them and let them choose, it's their choice. It's, it's your choices, you go to the poll, it's my choices, I go to the poll, and then, that's the decision we stick by.
And then we also have then, people say, how come we didn't fix our roads? Well, you've seen our budget, we had X amount of dollars and we fixed it, had the, you know.
Who's this two percent tax increase gonna go on? We don't have that many businesses.
What two percent?
What?
One percent?
And we're not deciding what it would be denied, I'm just saying to have further discussion about putting something in, we're talking about priorities, and we're, what, we want to fix our roads, we wanna, you know, do some other things, that we have these priorities, so looking at ways, how are we gonna pay for it? How are we gonna get those monies to do it? So, it would be put in before, eh, again, we're not making any decisions tonight, and as a matter of fact, I didn't even say we'd talk about this in two, three months, after we've all had time more to think about it, is, we have options. We can put a referendum that says, would you, Mr. or Mrs. Citizen, be in favor of a mill increase of X percent for X years to generate X amount of dollars that will go to fix these specific roads?
I thought we were talking about tax increase.
That's exactly what I just said. A mill increase is a tax, yeah.
All right.
It's a tax increase.
Yeah. Or, do we wanna put a, what, here, then, you know, do we wanna say, Mr. and Mrs. Citizen, are you willing to pay X percentage more for the Subway sandwich that you buy? For the topsoil you buy at Tree Top? For the whatever, you know, we don't, you're right, we don't have that many businesses to pay for these road improvements. It'd be, you know, specific for that, um.
I definitely think it's something that down the road we need to discuss, I think, you know, I, I see absolutely nothing wrong with putting it towards, to the citizens. I mean, none of us wanna raise taxes, but if they choose to go that route, if we give them that choice and they choose, that's what we do. If not, we stay the status quo the same as it's been. But I think that's a conversation for possibly the next workshop, and the workshop after that.
We're gonna be in the budget then.
I think I've already said that I'm open to discussing it, but my, just kind of initial point of view is, uh, probably less in favor of that, but open to discussing it, reserve the right to be wrong on that.
I, I haven't come out explicitly stated, but I've just, to be clear, yeah, I'm open for discussing it, but I do not see an increase in taxes happening, but I'm, I, I would not be against, you know, the way you're selling it as, you know, putting it to the citizens, but I, 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 based on my experience and talking with people, I, I don't see that happening, but I am willing to have the conversation, but I, as soon as we start talking about increasing taxes in any way, I, as a citizen, I'm not in favor of it.
I worry a little bit that it could be a distraction for us as the council, too, um, from focusing on those aggressive, that aggressive approach to selling the land, and it also could be something that people look at when they're, when we're trying to market them the land, hey, we're, they're talking about tax increases, and maybe I wanna hold off for a while, or, you know, that, that could have an impact on our ability to, to close some deals as well. Those are a couple of the things that concern me with it, uh, about putting it out there.
Anything else we wanna bring up tonight? We'll see y'all next week then.
Catch you, Steve.
All right.